While we're out here, we also let the public know that we're here, that the beach is a safe place to be. We also watch the hills and do what we call Fire Watch, where we try to see something spark before it gets too big and give county fire a chance to get the fire out quickly. This is a great example of how the city of Malibu and the community come together with the Sheriff's Department to make sure that the beachgoers have a great pleasant experience when they come and visit the city of Malibu.
One of the remarkable things about regional air pollution, sort of air pollution that blankets the whole basin, is the variety of impacts that it has. It's bad for the lungs, causes lung cancer, certainly exacerbation of asthma. It exacerbates chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, but it also has an impact on other organs in the body. We have some studies in which we've seen associations between air pollution and autism in children and with a whole variety of other health endpoints that are major causes of chronic disease of modern life.
So here in the Los Angeles basin and the general metropolitan area, we have specific problems in the area, particularly of air pollution, particulate matter, which you can think of as little pieces of dirt floating in the air, and ozone, which we're infamous for in Southern California. Those have long-term effects and short-term effects on the people living in this region.
It's been well established by decades of research that exposure to particulate matter is associated with increases in daily mortality, long-term increases in mortality. And in fact, in places where particulate matter has been reduced, you see decreases in death rates, really dramatic decreases.
Across California, there are about somewhere in the order of 7,000 deaths a year that can be attributed just to heart attacks and heart disease from this fine particulate matter, sort of regional particulate matter that blankets the whole area.
It's cancer, it's respiratory health, it's asthma, it's diabetes, and it's cardiovascular health, all of which, by the way, are the top reasons why Americans die, and die early.
Imagine this glass jar represents the air quality in Southern California before rapid population growth during the 20th century. With a dramatic increase in population came industrialization, including manufacturing facilities, refineries, power plants, smoke, fumes, and an ever-growing number of automobiles. Rapid industrial progress during World War II boosted the region's economy and created thousands of good jobs. However, industrialization also brought new waves of smog. And by the late 1940s, air pollution in-
All right, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission's regular meeting of January 16, 2024. This meeting is being held both in a hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely via Zoom due to the COVID-19 pandemic. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request-to-speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Typically, speakers are allotted three minutes each, subject to the commission's discretion. Individuals representing organizations are allotted five minutes if no member of the organization objects. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I'll call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Leonard?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Smith?
Absolutely here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Almost all here.
Chair Hill?
Pretty much.
You have a quorum.
All right. Well, let's see. Who'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Mr. Haney.
Mr. Norm Haney, how'd you like to lead us?
Please rise, face your flag, and state the pledge of this great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Norm. May I have an approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move you approve the agenda as staff recommends.
Wow. Do we need a second on that?
I was going to ask Drew if he is or is not going to recuse himself from a certain item, and if he is, I would move that to the end.
Yeah. I am going to recuse myself from item 4A, and I would like to ask if we could have that moved to the end of the meeting.
Okay, I would second that if that's okay with John.
So for the public, if you don't have the score sheet, that's the conditional use permit pertaining to the Tranqus Shopping Center?
Can I ask Drew, you're not within 500 feet, are you?
I am not within 500 feet, but I am a member of the Malibu West HOA.
Okay.
And when the concerts go on, depending on which way the wind blows, I can hear the music.
Okay.
Well, if you're on the board, you'd have to.
No, I'm not on the board. I'm a member of the Malibu West HOA.
Okay. You're not required to recuse if you don't want to.
That's correct. Correct. The Commissioner Leonard was crystal clear, and his intention is, of course, the prerogative of the commission whether or not to move it to the end. Let's keep the discussion on that.
Okay.
John, will you-
I will accept your amendment.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please?
Chair Hill, I just want to be sure. So I know that, I believe the last time we were here, 4A and 4B wanted to be heard together, but so we're going to keep 4B where it is, just bring 4A all the way back to past 5A.
I think that depends on Drew's, the nature of his recusal.
4B.
Or is there any reason, guys, that we would definitely-
Let's, I will make a motion to move 4A and 4B to the end of the meeting.
I will accept that. But you're going to be here for 4A?
Correct, yes. So here for 4B. So the end of the agenda will go as follows: 5A, 4B, 4A.
Right. Got it? We're switching the order of those two. Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. So-
4A is the concerts?
Okay, that's what you're recusing.
So we're just going to move, we're going to move 4A to the end?
Yeah.
I know people are coming to speak on that, so we should announce later that that's happened.
Right, I'll do that. In fact, I see one person coming in now. Okay.
I just wanted to be clear with Drew that he was going to be recusing himself on 4A and 4B, or just 4A?
Just 4A.
Just 4A. So we're just going to move 4A to the end of the meeting?
Yep.
But no, wait, but no, that's- Do we want to keep those items together? Once again, it is-
Yes, we're going to keep them together, but we're going to go 4B and then 4A?
Perfect.
Okay. Is that good, Rebecca?
4B is technically not tied in any particular way to 4A if you want to leave that as the first item. This is a pretty full agenda. I'm not confident that we're going to get through everything.
Okay, so then can we just move 4A to the end of the meeting? Is that okay, commissioners?
It's fine with me, John.
4A.
Okay, we'll move 4A to the end. Yes, 4A.
Okay.
Okay.
Roll call.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, having no ceremonial presentations, we're on to 2A, written and oral communications from the public. I don't see any slips up here. Do we have any? No live slips? Do we have any- Oh, did we get the report on the posting of the agenda?
You did not. The agenda for the meeting was properly posted on January 5, 2024. The amended agenda was properly posted on January 11, 2024. If there is anyone in the virtual meeting who would like to speak on matters under 2A, not on the agenda for this evening but within the purview of the Planning Commission, please click the raise hand button now. And see none.
We see none, okay. In that case, we are on to item 2B, Planning Commission and Staff Comments and Inquiries. Who would like to go first?
Skylar.
In the essence of time, I have no comments.
Okay.
That took a long time. I have a comment.
John?
Dennis, do you want to go?
Go ahead, I'll go after you.
Okay, I just want to report that I've had three calls this week about people complaining about having to come down here to consolidate minutes and why can't they do it on Zoom. I just want to report that to the staff.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that. Three people that what?
That wanted to be on Zoom and give minutes, and they can't do it. So they have to come down here and wait till 11 and get it canceled.
It's a legitimate question. Do you want to ask staff now and have them reply, or wait till we're done with comments?
Well, it's up to, Mr. Smith.
It's up to us, I guess.
That's our policy.
I know, but, you know, he's just asking whether we should get an answer, why it has to be that way.
I think that that's the policy, and we should stick to the policy. If there's a speaker that comes before us and we or the chair wants to give them more time, that's his prerogative to do that. Or it's our prerogative to do that, and there should be, there's nothing wrong with that.
I think there's been a lot of discussion that I don't necessarily agree with, but it has a certain amount of inertia about it being difficult to validate people online whether they're actually there or not and so forth. So you can't have- One person could sign in as three different people, for example.
Well, I watched three different cities' council meetings, and all of them have a picture of who's speaking, so I don't know why it's not possible, but it doesn't matter. You could always have the person's face there, and you'd know if he was the same person.
This is a deeper question about are we going to allow video in the meetings then? Which, just, Skylar?
I think at this time, that's sort of up to the council with that format and whether or not, because we're supposed to follow their format. So I think that we should stick to that. And I don't think that any changes right now at the beginning of a meeting about this-
Oh, no, I don't think we-
But it's very-
I don't think we can do that anyway.
I think it's very fair to pose the question, and maybe we pose that as a whole to the council, to say if there's a possibility of allowing video for Zoom. I know there's been, we've had many different challenges with, at various times, and the council has too with some of the folks that have called in. And we don't want to really open up the door for that. And I think that our system is working quite well. And again, I'll just reiterate that if there's a speaker that you or anyone up here wants to grant more time, and then the chair is amenable to, is acceptable of us doing that, we're more than allowed to request that.
Yeah. Let's put it on the back burner. It's a valid comment.
I was just reporting it.
Yeah, okay. Dennis?
Well, it's nice to see everybody here and our tremendous staff. Love you guys. That's right. So I've been thinking about this thing on the PCH. It's not gadgety, it's not anything. I think the one thing that works on highways is presence. And we have a lot of trouble at night. We hear from folks at Big Rock. I read on Nextdoor, you know, it's everywhere. And it's awful. And, you know, it continues to have things happen. My thought is, and it's, I know it's going to cost them money, and whatever interest that Councilman Stewart is getting us, we're going to have to spend some of it. Though, to me, one of the ways to make this work is to put cars out there at night. And you get them out there for 10 hours. And they're in the medians in about five different areas. So that's five different police cars. That's either three sheriffs and two CHPs, and they're there. And you take, you go from Tuna Canyon to, I guess, Civic Center or Webway. And you've got them in the medians, and their lights are running the whole time. And the one thing that works at night is you can see that stuff from a long ways away. So when you're making our turns and you're going through the loop, all of a sudden, there is a light, red and blue, flashing. It's got to slow them down. It's got to slow people down. And they don't just have to sit at that one spot in the median. They'll go back and forth or whatever. But if somebody's coming at them, they're going to know. They're going to know if they're speeding. And yes, it's going to be a little expensive, but it's not, it's not anything other than just, to me, kind of a really quick fix. I know we need to do something, but to me, having the cars out there is, man, that's got to work. I know it works on me when I see them. So I'm thinking it has to work. And at night like that on that road, we know it's dark. We know there's nobody out there. And you should be able to see that flashing from all the turns. So five or six cars probably in that span. What is that? I forget, eight, nine miles or whatever it is? From Tuna to here? So anyway, just a thought. Maybe I'll say something to council, but I, it's, or if I see somebody that knows any, or has pull or can do anything, I guess I'll talk to them. But anyway, that's my thought. So let's go to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. Drew?
Had a great holiday. Happy to be back, and let's get to it.
All right. I had a number of questions for staff that I'll limit to just a few. Let me just note, I know a couple people have walked in who probably care about what's going on at Tranqus. We're putting the CUP item at the end of the agenda tonight, but we will be hearing the Christie's item in the order that is in the agenda, if that makes sense to you, because Drew's recusing on CUP items, so we're putting that at the end. Okay. Couple of questions for Richard, and maybe let's do these one at a time. What is the, or we don't, we don't have Richard. Where's Richard? We have Adrian.
Adrian is present this evening.
I just, I have notes here that I wrote up in advance, and you just have to impersonate him. I'll do my best. What is the rule or guideline on when public comments need to be appended to staff reports? Specifically, on the council, on the PCH safety item, they brought it back a second time, and I know a lot of people wrote emails about ideas and things like what Dennis mentioned. And there's literally one email appended to the staff report with some suggestions, but everybody else who wrote something is not on there. So what is the rule or the guideline about when, when things get appended and when they don't?
I can't really speak on that item, because that's a public works item that was presented to City Council. So I don't know what their process is, but the Planning Department process is that whatever we receive prior to the staff report getting published, we do attach all those public comments. And then as things come in, after the report is published, we make those documents separately available to the commission.
So every, every department has their own process? There's no, like, state legal guideline or anything?
I don't know what their process is, or whether there's, maybe we can ask that question for.
There's nothing in the Brown Act that requires emails, letters to be, when you say appended to the agenda, you mean you can, like, when you bring it up online?
Correspondence.
You can click on it, right? No. So there's no, to my knowledge, no state law. I know various jurisdictions have different policies.
No, I don't mean append, I just mean as part of the staff report, at the back of the staff report.
I think that what you're asking is that when, I'm just, from my experience on city council, is that when those comments come in and they're attached, let's say if there's like an appeal on an item or something like that, you may see a lot of comments that were related to that appeal. But when it's an item that's coming newly before the council, unless it's like, let's say if it's Caltrans and there was correspondence in a direct letter from, or I mean, it's PCH and there's a correspondence and a direct letter from Caltrans, you may see that in there. You may see a direct letter from the Sheriff's Department in there.
Right.
I don't think that we would, I don't recall necessarily getting any items where we had 50 or 100 comments attached in the agenda report related to that item.
In the staff report?
In the staff report.
Well, we get that here. And my thought was just, that item on council is about brainstorming and having, coming up with ideas and what works and what doesn't. And people have written in now, maybe several weeks ago, and by the time they get there, that's all, everything everybody said is lost to the ether unless, you know, they have a chance to review it.
I don't think it's lost to the ether in the sense that I think that everybody that's on the council still receives all those comments.
Yeah.
Just like how we get emails from Rebecca, you know, that stuff, even if it's from before, it may not be attached in our staff report, but she's gonna send us that as a comment on that item.
But it's about public process, and the public reads the staff report. They didn't get what the council got necessarily, and it's nice to have it, you know, compended there.
Well, let me, like, can I ask?
Yeah.
Adrian, on our process, or maybe Rebecca, if we have a continued item, a big item that, say, got continued for two months, and everything that was written in two months ago, does that end up on the new staff report? Or is that just gone?
You'll see that we'll typically create a cover page that lists the key differences between the original report and what you're receiving. And often, the only difference is that we have added an additional recital for that, to reflect the continuance, changed the date on the resolution, and added an appendix with the comments that were received for the prior meeting.
Well, that's not my question. My question is, say we have a meeting that we continued, and 10 people wrote in for the first time, we never heard it, and then we get a staff report two months later, a month later, continuance. Do those correspondents get attached to the new staff report that we are hearing at night?
Yes, they do. And they are attached as a new appendix typically. The one time that that would not happen is if there were substantive changes throughout the report that the planner felt were difficult to capture with the one major, or if you continued a major item without it having been opened for comment, and changes occurred throughout the report, you might receive all of the prior stuff as part of the original correspondence attachment rather than a separate one because it's presented as a new report. Does that make sense to you?
No.
Yes, it does. And I think we're getting down a bit of a rabbit hole now.
Well, no, this is a very simple question. We have a.
It would typically come in the form of.
If I got, if I got a letter on January 6th, for a hearing, January 6th, and it was heard, it was continued and heard on March 6th, would that letter be in that staff?
She, yes, she said yes.
And typically, the answer is yes.
Okay.
There are exceptions to the rule.
Yeah, but rare. And I guess the comment here is that the public needs to see what the rest of the public has written too on, on something like, especially where there's a lot of different ideas in the air. Okay, and my next question for staff is, a couple different people independently contacted me about what they perceive as a new trend, and I don't know how factual this is or not, but towards not just substance abuse rehabs in residential neighborhoods, but now rehabs that are advertising that they treat mental health disorders such as psychosis, suicidal ideation, personality disorders, things that might be in the nature of people that are more likely to harm themselves or others. And I just wondered if, is there a, and these people are asking me, is there a categorical difference at some point? And where would that line be drawn? Like, surely somebody can't just say, I'm opening up my own private prison here, and I'm just gonna keep people here with ankle bracelets. So what do we allow in the community and what don't we allow?
I think that's a great question, probably better for the city attorney, but I think that as long as that facility, I'm gonna call it a facility, home, and operator has the state license to operate as a rehabilitation center, they are completely allowed to do so.
There's no distinction between this is just substance problem versus they have some.
That may be in their licensing, but I believe that, I'm not an expert on that, but I would, again, I would probably defer to the city attorney maybe to come back with us with some more information on that.
I believe, I believe it has to do with the ADA law, and it's federal, and we can't mess with that. And if you're, if you're in a category where you're disabled, then we can't mess with it. And I assume if you're crazy, you're disabled.
Okay, so I guess, this is the good point. Let's, let's bring, we don't need to mull this too long now, but just to bring back some comment on, at what point does somebody become, who's identified as a harm to themselves and potentially others, are they, do we just let them in residential neighborhoods? Or what is the cutoff line?
I don't think that we have any ability to regulate any of that, other than the facility managing that. I mean, that's the biggest challenges with rehabs in our EMS system, is that they just default to calling 911 and having the paramedics come and transporting the patient to a facility that has more proper care.
Well, okay, and the problem now is, we have, we have some people who, we have some people in the community who are suddenly fearing what's happening in their neighborhood. So, yeah, Drew?
I don't think you could do anything against anything that has not happened yet.
No, but you can regulate things that haven't happened yet.
It's a chair, I mean, to, you know, I can only speak from a very high level. I review the agenda and must admit, I didn't, I didn't rush up. There is, of course, this area is rife with both federal and state preemption measures. Obviously, there is some limit to that. What that is, I will have to, if you would, you know, spare me the indulgence, come back with a, with a more nuanced and complete report.
I think that might.
Off the top of my head, I'm not ready to answer that right now.
That would help the public, I think. And then finally, I had a question that probably I'll just wanna discuss with Richard, but it had to, unless you guys wanna talk about it, and we probably wanna move on, but just about equestrian facility in residential neighborhoods, and when, when are those permissible and when aren't they? And like I say, unless you guys are dying to talk about that.
There's nothing wrong with asking Adrian to have Richard bring something back like that, but as far as I know, Malibu's been a rural residential community, and you're allowed to have that on any property.
There are, I looked pretty closely at the code this, this week, and there are some contradictory things in the code. So I'll save that for Richard and maybe bring it back if, or, or, you know, maybe Adrian, but, but just, anyway, moving on. Any other Commissioner or comments before we go straight to staff comment? No? Adrian?
I do. I wanna ask staff how they enjoyed their vacation.
Thank you for asking. I think everyone, I speak for everybody. I think we all enjoy our week off, so it was very refreshing to be able to take time off and not worry about the emails that accumulate over the time that you're away from the office. So it was nice. I don't have any comments, but I will say that we can, we can bring back the equestrian facilities. I know we, we traded some emails earlier today, and we can discuss that further. But, you know, it would probably be best to kinda have Richard in that conversation as well.
Right, 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 good. Is that it, Adrian?
That's all for me.
That's it, okay. Then I guess that, we are now then on to the consent calendar. Does anybody need or want to poll anything? I'm not seeing any.
I don't know if we have any speaker slips on consent, but I need to, I would like to approve the sound calendar, but I need to recuse myself from voting on item 3B3. I know that they're all de minimis, so I'm just putting that out there.
I second approving the consent calendar.
That's 6655 Doom Drive?
Correct.
Okay, so. What, oh, somebody, oh, here we go. All right, so we have somebody wanting to poll item 3B1.
Although that is the applicant, I believe he may want to poll that because we have some disagreement about terms, I think. Don Schmitz, did you wanna speak on item 3B1?
Well, I most certainly didn't wanna pull my item off the consent calendar. I felt out a speaker slip in case it was necessary to answer questions, but otherwise, we're good to go.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Remind the chairman we have to vote on the minutes.
Those are part of the consent calendar, right? We have to vote on them separately?
Nope. Nope, you can just approve the consent calendar as drafted. The record will note that Commissioner Peake is.
I seconded also.
Correct, you seconded. Commissioner Peake is recused from 3B3. If that is the motion, you all can take, take a roll call, and we can proceed with the meeting.
John?
It's fine with me if we don't have to vote on them.
Okay.
It's having the past, I think.
All right, let's, let's vote on the consent calendar as moved. Roll call, please.
Didn't, I thought Drew did.
You just need a unanimous.
Unanimous, okay. Right, got it. All right, then we are, for the moment, skipping 4A, and putting that at the end of the agenda. That moves us on to 4B, right? Okay, this is. 4B, Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number 18-002, An Application to Amend Conditional Use Permit Number 07-013, To Expand the Service Area of an Existing Restaurant, Restaurant B, Currently Christie's Village Cafe, And to Maintain Current Hours of Operation, and this was continued from November 30th. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. The item before you tonight is Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number 18-002, Located at 30745 and 30811 Pacific Coast Highway. The project site is located in the Tranqus Country Market on one of the two parcels that compose the shopping center. The subject parcel is highlighted in blue and is zoned community commercial. PCH borders the south property line, followed by residential properties and private recreational facilities, and a public, one public open space area. The second parcel of the shopping center is to the west, also zoned community commercial, and is a gas station and parking lot. And to the north and east are also residential, along with some residentials in the south area. The restaurant is located in Building B, on, whoops, sorry about that. The restaurant is located in Building B and is located on the western side of the parcel, just north of the common area lawn shown there. The proposal before you tonight is to amend Conditional Use Permit Number 07-013, To Allow For an Existing Restaurant, Referred to as Restaurant B in the original CUP, and is currently existing as Christie's Village Cafe, To Expand Its Existing Interior and Exterior Service Area By 1631 Square Feet, And To Memorialize Their Current Hours of Operation From 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday Through Sunday. The area in blue is the existing interior service area, and the yellow is the existing exterior service area. And just as a note, the green is the existing non-service area. As shown here, the interior area expands into the next-door unit, increasing the interior service area by 925 square feet, and the existing exterior service area by 706 square feet. With the 1631 square foot addition, both interior and exterior, the total service area would be 3,262 square feet, and the non-service area would also be increased by 84 square feet. It should be noted that this is not a final floor plan. It is just meant to represent the total service area that could be used. A final floor plan would be approved in a separate tenant improvement entitlement that is compliant with the conditions in this CUPA and the original CUP. For the hours of operation, the original CUP allowed for them to be 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then, from then, 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Monday Through Sunday. A planning director determination on May 8th in 2013 allowed for them to operate from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM with no afternoon closures, and this CUPA would formalize the planning director's decision. In terms of parking, there is no proposed building additions as it's converting the use of existing spaces. But as a note, the shopping center requires 285 parking spaces between the shopping center use on 30745 PCH and the gas station on 30811 PCH. The center currently provides 339 parking spaces, a surplus of 54. The traffic analysis that reviewed a cumulative impact of the all projects happening at Tranqus Country Market did conclude that this proposal is not anticipated to cause any operational constraints on access, circulation, or parking. Staff received two correspondences after the staff report was published, one from Malibu Brewing Company and one from the property owner's representatives, both in support of the amendment. And with that, staff recommends adopting Planning Commission Resolution Number 24-02, Determining the Project Is Categorically Exempt From the California Environmental Quality Act, And Approving Conditional Use Permit Amendment Number 18-002, To Amend Conditional Use Permit Number 07-013, To Expand the Existing Interior and Exterior Restaurant Service Area of Christie's Village Cafe By 1631 Square Feet, For a Total Service Area of 3,262 Square Feet, And to Maintain Current Hours of Operation. Staff is ready for any questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Samantha. Before we do any public comment, can we get disclosures, please, Dennis?
None.
Skylar?
My disclosure would be that I frequent the shopping center, and I enjoy the shopping center. I enjoy the parking in the shopping center, and I enjoy the food in the shopping center. That would be it.
Me too.
Ditto.
Okay, John?
I visited the, the site with Craig on Saturday, Friday?
Friday.
Friday, and counted the seats, and surveyed the area, and talked to the manager, who explained to us the seating in the outside area and the inside area. I did observe that there are. I did observe that there are 120 seats in place cor, right now.
Okay, let's keep that number in mind. I, I would add to what John said, we spoke with Taylor. We learned that the plan before us tonight is not what they intend to do. They have a different seating arrangement, but I think maybe what we're hearing from staff is that that can be approved under a separate process, right? So that, that's not a stumbling block then? Okay, I hear, I see a nodding head for the record.
Correct.
We heard that the kitchen can't do more than 80 people at a time due to being able to fit only three people in the kitchen. I have questions about that, that we could get to. And the, apparently the dog area is the portion of the patio at the south side of the entrance, so that, that leaves a question about what, if any, dog area would there be if that area is to remain open with nothing on it by this plan? So we can get into these details. Public comments, I have one slip here from the applicant, right? No other public speakers? Do we have anybody online?
There are no raised hands.
Okay, well, I guess they can raise their hand up until the point when the applicant is done, but go ahead and, and if you have 15 minutes, you can reserve any portion of that for rebuttal if we do have any people who want to speak. And with that, welcome and go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jackson McNeil. I'm a land use attorney with Elkins Cult. Thank you so much for your consideration tonight. We really appreciate being here. As you know, we represent Zuma Beach Properties LLC, the owner of the Trancas Market Shopping Center, but tonight we're also here representing Christie Apana and the Christie Village Cafe. Let me see if I've got the clicker here. Okay, perfect. This CUP would authorize Christie's to expand its existing service area by a little over 1,600 square feet, just 406 square feet more service area than what's authorized by the existing entitlements. A good portion of that, as you heard, involves expanding into the vacant tenant space immediately next door, and the remainder of that involves legalizing Christie's use of the outdoor patio area. The application also documents, confirms that Christie's can, can continue operating between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m., and as you just heard from staff, it does not involve the approval of any particular seating chart or, or table layout. We want to make it really clear that this application is not for any new construction. We're not changing the building envelope in any way. We're not expanding into an area that doesn't already exist. This is simply a matter of taking the existing immediately next door retail space and the existing outdoor patio space and letting those areas be used for restaurant. I think it's also important to note that the existing entitlements already authorize an 80-seat restaurant. I, I know it sounds like you went there and counted the seats, but historically Christie's has only been able to use a little bit less than 80 because it doesn't have the space to, or when it does try to use that amount, it's rather crowded inside of the restaurant. With the expansion, Christie's will still be limited to 80 seats, as you probably saw in the draft resolution. That will be a condition of approval, so any number more than that would violate the condition of approval. We're just asking for the space to actually be able to use that 80 seats comfortably. This is important. When you think about restaurant impacts, the, the impacts are based primarily on the number of seats, right? You could have a restaurant the size of the Library of Congress, but if you only have 80 seats, you can only serve 80 people. When the entitlements were originally approved in 2010, it was envisioned that there would be a second restaurant in Building R, that's the building that currently houses Malibu Brewing Company. The entitlement specified that this restaurant, restaurant could have up to 2,856 square feet of restaurant service area. Ultimately, though, the shopping center and the tenant decided that Building B was a better place for a restaurant. That's where Christie's is now. It's got that nice outdoor patio area and it faces the grassy lawn, and so that's where Christie's ended up. So as a result, Christie uses only about 1,600 square feet of that 2,800 square foot limit. So even though this expansion adds about 1,600 square feet of restaurant service area, the total service area ends up being about 3,300 square feet, which is only 400 square feet more than what was originally approved. This is just a visual sort of showing what we've been talking about. That blue area shows the existing interior space. The orange shows that currently vacant retail space, which is the interior space that Christie's would expand into. The yellow is the existing authorized outdoor space, and the green would legalize the use of that area to the right, primarily to the right of the main door, that outdoor patio area. We want to emphasize the importance of this application. This would allow Christie's to update and remodel her restaurant to a more spacious, more modern floor plan. It would utilize a totally vacant, unused tenant space. It would legalize the use of an outdoor patio, which is critical for restaurants in Southern California, particularly Malibu. Everyone loves eating outdoors. Heaven forbid we have another pandemic, but I can tell you that outdoor dining was definitely a lifeline for restaurants during the pandemic when nobody wanted to eat indoors. And more than anything, I want you to remember that this is an application would help a real business owner with real employees and real customers that serves, I think, really good food to expand and thrive in Western Malibu, which is not an easy thing to do. I'm a lawyer, it's easy to talk about conditions of approval and resolutions and municipal codes, and that's all fun, but at the end of the day, we think this application is about helping a real business owner succeed. And from the shopping center's perspective, it's a, it's a commitment to retaining and helping good tenants, which is important for the long-term viability of the shopping center. But I want you to hear from Christie directly and let her tell you why this application is important for her business.
You can pause the clock, right? No, she's right here.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Since 2017, we have been looking to expand for a private room. In a restaurant business with our clientele, a private room is an important element. We have numerous requests, but cannot accommodate anyone who would like a private dining room. This is a popular request for groups of 10 to 15 people. On a rainy day in December, we had a customer that wanted to celebrate their 55th anniversary. Due to the rain, it would be the first time they dined indoors since the COVID pandemic started. But they needed to be as isolated as possible as their elderly with health issues. Had we had the private dining area, we could have accommodated them with ease and peace of mind. Instead, they had to opt for takeout. As we all know, COVID has changed customer habits. As dining habits change, patios are popular. Having two patio sides are essential as one is dog-friendly. We try to accommodate all of our customers' requests. We live in a different world, being able to dine on the patio and watch the children play on the grass is rare. I am fortunate that I get to see it often. In today's world, COVID, COVID has taught us traditional dining, the traditional dining model is no longer sufficient. We need the space to pivot and accommodate our customers' needs. I'm asking you, our local government, for help and support in having my business succeed. I have served my community of Malibu in many different ways. I was one of the few restaurants that stayed open during the entire COVID pandemic. Customers drove from central Malibu on a regular basis as there were no other options. As a business, it hurt us. Had we closed, we would have qualified for the second round of PPP money. Our numbers in 2019 were substantially down from the fires, and with the calculation for PPP money, we missed it by 2%. It wasn't because we were financially successful during COVID, it was because our 2019 numbers were affected by the Woolsey Fire. As frustrating as it was, I realize how important staying open for the community was. Now we are excited to be, to be serving and thriving in Western Malibu. This application is important to our success. Please approve this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Christie, I really appreciate that. I just want to tie it all together, you know, respectfully, Commissioners, we believe this is a no-brainer. We're not increasing the number of allowed maximum seats, we aren't changing the building's footprint or envelope in any way. This is a relatively small change. It's a good thing for Christie's, as you just heard from her directly. It's a good thing, frankly, for the shopping center, and we think it's a good thing for Malibu, which needs small, family-friendly eateries just like this one, and we want them to succeed, and we encourage you to approve this application. And with that, I invite any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You have six plus minutes for rebuttal if necessary. Is there anybody, online speakers?
There's one raised hand from Joe Drummond.
Okay, let's hear from Joe then.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to support Christie's and Elkins Cult. They are a beloved establishment, and I've been there several times, especially during the summer concerts when there's not a lot of places to sit, so it's great that if you can accommodate this, that would be fantastic, and I'm sure the whole community would support this if they knew about it, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Do you guys need any more rebuttal, or you have more time if you have more to say?
No, we don't need rebuttal, but we're welcome to answer any questions.
Right, okay. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back up to the dais. I see a hand here with Skylar Peak.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this Conditional Use Permit for Amendment Number 18-002.
A second.
I'm not going to read the rest of it.
Okay, I have several questions.
Okay, we, we have a motion and a second for approval on the table, and John, you have questions?
Yeah, we went there the other day, and you can look at the plans supplied by the staff, which shows 10 seats, and this is a question for you or Christie, shows 10 seats in the front patio, and none on the side patio because it's not yours yet. Are you planning on having 10 seats only in the front patio?
The, so the...
Front patios, I should say.
So just to clarify, this application would legalize the use of that entire front patio with the amount of actual, the actual number of seats to be determined in an over the counting planning entitlement. This application doesn't approve any specific seating arrangement or determine where seats will be where.
Okay, but you would now have 120 seats sitting there.
So...
So are you, you are saying that you are going to eliminate 40 seats but expand 1,600 square feet?
So to be, to be really clear, the restaurant's currently limited to 80 seats. Christie's practice is to have no more than 80 seats. I understand that the music center opening, the music business opening, they had chairs available for them to use, that was not used for restaurant area. In any case, to the extent there ever was a violation of that condition, it's just that, a violation of the condition that could be handled through a code enforcement action or, if necessary, revocation by this commission of the Conditional Use Permit. But to be clear, we're not asking for any more seats, this is not an opportunity to double seating. I think as you heard from Christie, and I just, if you indulge me for a moment, she told you that business is changing, right? Like, right now, she's a very small area of approved outdoor patio space. People want to eat outdoors, she needs the entire patio space. You heard from her that she needs private dining area, interior space, right? And so she needs to be able to do private events. So just because you maybe move around where some of the seats are, the opportunity to expand the business isn't necessarily an opportunity to double the number of seats, it's an opportunity to use the business in a way that the public wants, i.e. a private dining room and the outdoor patio area.
So if...
While we're discussing this, staff, sorry, while we're discussing this, staff, if, would you please put up sheet AS 201? This is the, it's PDF page 90 of 98. This has the plan of the existing and the proposed areas in use, and it might be helpful for those of us here and those playing along at home to look at what we're talking about.
Yeah, no, what I'm really asking is, you're, you're prepared to move essentially 60 seats out of your front dining room, out of the front patio, or, or 50, but a huge amount, more than three quarters. And then, so that's, that's the question I'm asking because that's what you're asking for. And the second question is, if you have a private dining room and you have 40 people have a private party, you're going to take 40 seats out of the rest of the restaurant and not serve in those seats. Is that correct?
So just to be very clear, at the end of the day, yes, we're asking for an expansion in the amount of square footage and in the dining service area. We're not asking for an increase in the number of allowed seats. Whether or not Ms. Apana can make that work is frankly up, is up to her, and she believes that this will allow her and give her flexibility to make her business work. It's for the, the same thing with the private dining space. I don't think she's committing to using that permanently for a private dining room but wants that flexibility to do so. I mean, at the end of the day, the conditions of approval will always say that the maximum number of seats and the maximum number of diner occupancy is 80. And so if she wants to use 40 for a private dining event, then yes, she will be limited to another 40 in the rest of the restaurant.
So more than 80 seats is, in your opinion, is a violation. Right now you have 120, and by hand count on a weekday, okay? Now...
I, I, you know, just respectfully, if I can respond to that for a second, I understand you were there, I don't, I don't doubt the veracity of your comment in any way, I, I completely understand, and I, I know that, I'm sure you were there and counted, but just because there were seating, like, seats available and they have extra seats does not mean that those seats were being used.
Okay, but they were, if I walked in there, they would have seated me. Now, on a, on these parties that are on Friday, Thursday or Friday, we're going to consider someday, you wouldn't consider that exception, you still would have 80 seats.
That's correct, yeah, yes, yeah. Regardless of whether a patron is there for one of the temporary events because they love Christie's, it, it doesn't matter. The maximum number of dining occupants, number of dining seats is 80.
Okay.
Does, does somebody who just orders a cocktail to watch the music, is that, is that a dining in your calculation, or is that, they could go beyond 80 in that case?
If they're sitting at the bar having a cocktail, I believe it does count. If they're just getting to go, obviously that does not count. To the extent there's any ambiguity in the future about that, we can always resolve that through a planning director interpretation.
I mean, if you, you have 80 people dining, say, and you have an event outside, and you could theoretically with the 120 seats we saw, you could have 40 more people with drinks, but those wouldn't count?
No, you can't count.
You can or can't, you could or couldn't have?
You must count.
So you must count those, any, anybody who orders anything, you count that chair, right?
If they eat there.
Whether it comes from the kitchen or not?
I, I think we have an applicant here that's saying that they have to count those seats and they're being very forward with us, so I don't understand what the issue is.
Yeah, let me ask staff a question. Samantha, it appears that you based everything upon this, this restaurant being in, in a shopping center that's bounded by Trancas and the river. But when it was originally, CUP was approved, it was, it was all three lots considered one lot. And I wonder how you handle the fact that the CUP on this property does not allow any patrons to park across Trancas Road? It must be employees only. So did you count that in your ability to provide these extra, or are you not providing any extra parking?
So the CUP amendment, I mean, so the CUP approved as a joint use, the 339 parking spaces, and that was intended for, for employees, but it does factor into the uses and the required parking that they need. So for this one, the employees will be parking at the employee lot. They are parking at the employee lot. The uses are all, they're not increasing the additional square footage of the actual building, it's still the same about 54,000 square feet of gross floor area that the original CUP used. But if you were to calculate the additional floor area under the strictest of parking requirements for the shopping center, I ran this by earlier just as like a quick thing, if we were to apply it that way, it would be an additional something around 33 required parking, but that again is including employees and the restaurant parking requirement does not specify between employees and...
No, but there'd be nowhere near 33 employees for 80 people.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and you're required to count the, the deck area as, as a seating requirement per table. Is that correct? Is that correct? So it does increase the parking when you increase the, the seating area. They have 54 extras parking spots. No, they don't have 54.
Vice Chair Mazza, if I could, if you could indulge me on that, I'm happy to provide it.
Hang on, Adrian's got a comment.
Yes, I was going to say that the way the parking spaces were calculated for this use was not individually calculated as a restaurant, but it was calculated as a shopping center, because that's the way it was originally done when the shopping center was approved. So it's five parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of, square feet, and it's the planning director's determination if this is a well-balanced center. And if that determination is still true today, then those are the calculations that are used to establish the required parking spaces. So that's what was done here. Now, in terms of the parking, I agree that something unique was approved for this shopping center, that we don't see in other shopping centers, in that they were parking spaces across the street, right? There's 80 parking spaces across the street. And when this shopping center was approved, it was a condition by the decision-makers, whether it was Planning Commission, City Council, that those parking spaces would be strictly used by the, by, by the employees, because it was an inconvenient place for parking to be for their customers. So that was uniquely done for this shopping center. However, they had a surplus of 54, am I correct? 54 parking spaces. So they have 54 parking spaces over what they were required to provide for a shopping center at the time, and that remains to be true today.
Right, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they can be used for patrons. And it depends on how many employees and how many patrons you have.
Well, again, if you're calculating for each use separately, you'd be 100% correct. However, the way the parking spaces were calculated for this shopping center as a well-balanced shopping center, based on the code, we didn't, we didn't count the parking spaces for each individual use, but instead, for the floor area square footage, which is again, five parking spaces for each 1,000 square feet of floor area.
Right, but did, did you not at that point have no outside dining?
There was outside dining even then. They're, they're proposing additional. But again, the, the determination is whether this is still a well-balanced shopping center or if it's not, right?
Okay.
If it remains to be a well-balanced shopping center, then we still apply the shopping center standards.
Okay, so...
If it's not, then...
I understand you. So how are you, how is, how are you going to enforce this?
Enforce the parking or enforce the seats?
Seats.
So as it was explained, this would be a code violation. So the way that we would resolve it, and we were not aware that they had 120 seats, obviously, that is a violation of their CUP. So we will have the planning, we will have the code enforcement go out there and investigate this. And if, in fact, they do have more, then they would be required to remove the additional seats. And then we can also add an additional condition to this approval that would require us to do periodic inspections if this was a concern long-term. But typically, we act on violations based on complaints, so we had not received a complaint on this.
Just as, as a matter of clarification, Adrian, are the extra seats related, still related to the COVID expansion, or is that supposed to have contracted by now, or what's the...
The extra exterior seats were unpermitted, in an unpermitted patio expansion that was discovered at the site visit, and that was part of the reason that this item was originally continued, was to address that, find out the full scope of that, to include it in this presentation. This would, there are a few conditions here that do limit them to 80, and there is one that require, that we will periodically think first go out after a year to make sure that things are still going together, and then come back another either three or five years to make sure that they're still abiding by these conditions. The 80-seat requirement's pretty strict, as I believe it does have to do with the septic system. It was an environmental health requirement.
Okay, so that isn't, isn't just related to how many people fit in the kitchen, but it's, it's a more firm rule than that? Okay, good, because that was something I wondered about, is having work in restaurants, et cetera. Okay.
The only reason I bring this up is I have owned restaurants in the past. Restaurants are valued on seating capacity. They're not valued on how big they are. Really how you value them.
Okay, do you have, do you have other questions?
Let me just, let me check one other space.
Guys, yeah. He's, he's looking something up.
I was just going to make the comment that, you know, I, I do frequent that shopping center relatively regularly. Of the various shopping centers that exist in this city, that I would definitely not suggest that we would vote for something like this, because I do believe that they're underparked. I think that you guys bring up some really good concerns relative to parking, but I do think that for what's being requested here, when I visit that on a regular basis, I never have a problem finding a parking spot. And if I do, I can always go to the lot that's right behind, and there's always parking spots in there. And I don't think that adding what we see in front of us is going to have any real effect on that.
I would totally agree with you if we had heard the other item at the same time. If we have 75 events a year, or whatever, that may change. These are forever, guys. You bring the Rolling Stones in one weekend?
Unfortunately, I, I think that while the interpretation may be that this is some forever, you know, catastrophic event, I don't think that, I'm not, I shouldn't say that. I think that we have an awesome business in our community, and we should be doing everything to support a business owner that wants to have their footprint here, and is a part of the community, and is serving the residents of our community.
And I totally agree with you. I just want to make the statement that when you plan, you plan for everybody and forever.
Great.
We, we had an idea on the table, a question about how often we want to have this reviewed.
Okay, well, I will, I will agree with, I will second Skylar's motion with the addition of annual inspection.
There, there already was a second by Commissioner Smith.
Okay, then I will make a motion.
Friendly, friendly amendment?
No, I'm going to make a motion to approve this project with an annual inspection of once a year. And if not, then it's up to the public to turn people in. Do I have a second for that?
I'm just going to...
Okay, so we can vote on that.
Can we discuss that real quick?
Sure.
May I ask a question of planning staff, which is, what is the... The way that I understand this is that the applicant is going to have to come back for however they're going to do the build-out, and that's going to dictate how they're going to propose their seating chart and everything else. Under normal circumstances with this, when would you be going back and following up with, with the CUP and making sure that they're in compliance, under standard procedure?
It's a great question. We typically do a final inspection when there is new development. In this, in this case, there is new, there's no new development that's being proposed. So there is no requirement for us to do an inspection for the CUP, and there will be no requirement for us to do an inspection for the over-the-counter application that would be required for their interior improvements. So there wouldn't be a reason for us to go out there and do an inspection. I think we misspoke before. We do not have a condition currently that requires us to do an annual review, or we sometimes have a condition that requires at least an inspection a year from the time they, they commence their use, or in this case, you know, they, they expand or get their over-the-counter approval for, for their expansion. And, you know, so that would be something that can be added to the resolution.
What, what if we did, a year later, and then every two years thereafter?
Let me just make a comment. If we had put some provision like that in Nobu, there wouldn't be a cop car sitting in the middle of the highway every Friday and Saturday night, because we have no way, because we didn't put it in there, and you don't change CUPs.
Okay, well, with all due respect, this is not Nobu. While I think that she would love to have that kind of a business going on there, and I would, I would implore you to be successful however you think that you should be. Of course, so long as it's in compliance, whatever is approved by the city. Are there other restaurants that have been approved in any form of expansion or anything where the city has required multiple visits by the Planning Commission on an annual basis? Because I'm not really aware that there are.
We do have a few that have required staff to do the first-year inspection and then a five-year inspection after that. We, we, I don't, I can't think of any other one where we've done annual reviews in perpetuity.
I would be willing to do a review one year after it's approved, and I would be willing to do a review five years after that. I don't think that it's a valuable usage of our staff time to be doing it on an annual basis. And I think that if the public, and Christie is operating something that's in violation with that, and the public reports it to any member of our staff, they're going to visit it immediately and address the problem.
Okay, I will take that as a friendly amendment to my motion. And that gives us a way out. Christie may sell out for $10 million to Mr. Nobu and, or Mr. Chow, and he opens up his restaurant, you know? You never know.
I don't think Mr. Chow's coming back to Malibu, but that's a side note. Okay, so I just want to, and then I have a question for Mr. McNeil. And as, you very much understand what we're, what we're doing and that, and that we would like to come in a year after, you know, whatever is approved with your seating chart and that. We'd have a review at that point to make sure that that's in compliance, and then there'd be a subsequent review five years beyond that. And if they're, you know, the applicant is aware that if at any time there's a code enforcement violation, that they would be possibly paid a visit and asked to correct it.
Sure. Commissioner Peak, thank you for inviting my input. Yeah, we fully understand that a code violation case can be opened at any time for any use that's not complying with the conditions of approval. We also understand that Condition 20 of the draft resolution allows this commission to modify or revoke the CUP if there's sufficient grounds to do so. I think we would be amenable, subject to me checking with my client and checking with Christie, to that condition, allowing for a first annual and a five-year inspection. Respectfully, I would just request that the onus is on staff, they come out and do the inspection, rather than a lengthy compliance document that has to be produced by the applicant, just because restaurant is a razor-thin profit margin business. It's a shame to pay lawyers like me to help, you know, my client and Christie come up with compliance documents, but otherwise, I think we would be agreeable to that.
I wish there were more attorneys like yourself that could talk themselves out of work.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, hang on. Adrian, is that, that's, that's how it would work?
That's typically how it works.
Okay.
Well, Adrian typically isn't, doesn't the staff charge a fee? Not a report, not a lawyer, anything else to do inspections? I know they do on the pot shop.
So it, it does depend on how the condition is written. So again, if this, if the commission would like to require that a fee be paid, then we would collect that fee before we do a final, before we do the inspection. However, collecting a fee can become very complicated, and some people may not be that willing to have us visit their site anyway. So collecting that fee after the fact may be very troublesome.
I just thought it was a procedure. It's not a procedure.
Not, not, we, we do collect a fee for a final inspection, not for the review of a CUP.
So my motion stands if you accept the, your provisions as an, as an amendment.
So to be clear on the motion, that would be having a approval of this conditional use permit, 18-002, with an application to amend the CUP Number 07-013 to expand the service area of an existing restaurant, Restaurant B, currently Christie's Village Cafe, to maintain the current hours of preparation, and...
And a one-year inspection and a five-year.
So we'd have a one-year inspection and a five-year inspection, and we would have no additional fees related to that.
Fine, if you accept that, we can vote on it.
Great.
Do you accept it?
He accepts it.
Okay.
Yeah, all right.
Wait, but so, but so are we, was there a second for vice chairs?
Yeah, Skylar.
Got it, understood. Thank you.
Actually, I think that Craig seconded the motion for discussion.
I will, I will accept that. Whoever seconded, I'm, I'm fine with that. I think we're ready to call roll here.
So it was Vice Chair Mazza with a second by Chair Hill.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. So now we are on to, I don't think we need a break yet, right? Moving ahead? Okay. To Foresee Coastal Development Permit Number 19-054, Variance Number 23-006, and CUP Number 19-006, An Application For A New Single-Story Commercial Office Building At 3705 Cross Creek Road. Maybe we have a staff report, please, Renika? We've got dead air for the folks at home.
We're waiting for the presentation to come up.
Do we, why don't we take some disclosures now while we're waiting? Any?
None.
I drove by the site earlier today and saw the story poles. They were just beautiful story poles. I love our orange story poles. That's my only comment.
I, I will second your comments, exactly. John?
I drove by the site, looked over the fence. At the time the property was sold, I looked at buying it, so I inspected it, but that was, I don't know, maybe five years ago, something like that. And that's the existing building.
Drew?
None.
Okay, we have a report?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the Planning Commission. This project proposes the construction of a new detached commercial office building, roughly 1,300 square feet. The project also includes reconfigured parking areas to create new open space and landscaping areas that will be displaced by the proposed building. The, the subject property is located on 3705 Cross Creek, which is north of Civic Center Way, within the Civic Center neighborhood. The property is in an area primarily zoned for and developed with non-residential uses that include retail centers to the south and west, and a storage yard across Cross Creek Road to the east. North of the subject parcel is an area that transitions to rural residential development consisting of single-family residential uses near the western entry of the Sarah Retreat neighborhood. The existing development was originally permitted by Los Angeles County and is not conforming for the city's landscaping and open space requirements. Although the project will slightly reduce the non-conforming landscaping and open space, the project still requires a variance, because the site is unable to comply with these requirements. The application also includes a request for a CUP for new construction in excess of 500 square feet. And this is a rendering, looking northwest, excuse me, south, south, from the southwest of the site. And here is an existing layout of the landscaping and open space configuration. The green representing the lands, the existing landscape, and the blue representing the existing open space. And here is the reconfigured areas, again, the blue representing open space and the landscaping represented in green. The new, and those areas, the new areas are currently boxed in red on this exhibit here. The newly created landscaping and open space will include DG deer grass, prickly pear cacti, and agave plants. And that does conclude my presentation. In conclusion, staff recommends Planning Commission, the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 24-05, including the subject CDP and the associated discretionary request. I'm available for any questions. The applicant team and owner are also available as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Renika. We have the applicant. Do we have any? That's the only slip I have here. Do we have any online people waiting?
There's one raised hand.
Okay, so let's hear from the applicant then. Michael, is it Prabhu?
That's correct. You got it right.
All right, welcome.
Usually people butcher it. Uh, thank you. My name is Michael Prabhu. Uh, on behalf of the applicant, uh, longtime Malibu resident, born and raised out here, so I'm happy to be here. Um, the site was originally constructed in nineteen seventy, uh, for use by a local telecommunications company as their site and maintenance yard. The current ownership group acquired it in August of twenty fifteen with the intent of adapting it to be a, um, commercial office use. We applied for a permit to renovate the existing building and the exterior, uh, site work, and then we've also separately applied for this conditional use permit to add the additional twelve hundred ninety-nine square foot building, which will serve as the conference room for the existing tenant in the space. It's currently leased to Audi North America. It's not a car service yard, it's not a sales yard, it is designers working on the electric vehicles of the future. So there's twelve employees that are currently working there. This is really to give them a conference room to utilize at the site for their design services. Uh, we're reconfiguring some of the existing open space area, converting it from parking into landscaped open space, and reconfiguring some of the parking areas to accomplish meeting the minimum parking requirements at twenty-one stalls. And we believe this improves the overall site. We believe that this, uh, the work we've done to the project compared to what it was is a significant improvement over what was existing in twenty fifteen. I can show you a couple of slides of, this is the existing building, this is where it's at, located at the end of Cross Creek Road. Uh, this is what the current plan is now. We can run through this. This shows you where we've received previous permit and approvals in twenty nineteen, which was occupied in twenty twenty. We have, uh, the minimum parking stall requirements, that's the existing. If we walk through this, this will allow us to get to the proposed parking modification, gets us to the twenty-one stalls required. This is again, this is a slide that Renika showed you, where we're going to be do the conversion, uh, to, uh, take care of the future pavilion building, also known as the conference room, uh, conference building. The two red-hatched areas are where we're converting the, uh, parking to, uh, open space landscape. Uh, this is what it looked like in twenty fifteen, as you can see, it was charming. Uh, again, the existing building, this is what we've converted to. We believe it's a significant improvement over what it was in twenty fifteen. This is an interior shot of where the designers work at. This is a rendering of what the building will look like, uh, once we receive approvals. And, uh, this is another view of it. It is a conference room, it's got, uh, a small bathroom area and a bank, a kitchenette to service that. Again, this is the proposed site, and that's, uh, any questions? Happy to answer it.
Okay, thank you. You've got over twelve minutes remaining to rebut if necessary. Um, let's hear from the member of the public online.
Joe Drummond?
Joe Drummond, can we hear you?
Hi.
Hi, we can.
Okay. Oh, I just, I'm glad to hear that it's not going to be a sales office. I'm just, I think we should make sure that there is no sort of testing of any of their designs or anything on the site, if that's possible, some kind of condition, but I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't anything to do with dealership or sales or anything like that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, I guess just following that question, can, could somebody walk in there and, in any form, uh, review or potentially, uh, you know, buy on a computer or on their, is there any way that any sales happen here?
No.
Okay.
Full stop. So twelve designers, twelve computers, that's it. You can't, I can't even get in there today without going through Audi's security. So it's, it's, it's a highly secure facility, creating the cars of the future. It's a secret.
I noticed that when I stopped there today.
Yeah. Yeah.
Question?
Um, okay, wait, hang on. So we have no more speakers, right? So what, you, we're closing the public hearing, but you have a question for.
Several questions. Um, why in some drawings is it called an office and other drawings a pavilion? And why do the, why do the sliding doors open? You can drive a car in there, correct? Uh, you have one whole side of the building is sliding doors that are open?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a design look, movement on the building, that's it. It's intended to be open space.
So cars may not be parked inside of that building?
There's no intent to park a car inside that building, there's an intent to put a conference table in there and have it as a conference room.
So you have twelve employees and you need thirteen hundred square feet for a conference room?
There, it's designed to give these individuals an opportunity to collaborate in a space on the site. Correct.
Okay, thank you. I, I have several for Renika. We're sitting right next door to Whole Foods, and Whole Foods exceeded their, in my opinion, exceeded their, uh, uh, their landscaping by promising us a green wall, which never The shopping center next to it had a development agreement with the city, saying, gee, we want to get bigger, we want to violate the, the Civic Center's specific plan, and we'll give you a bunch of money. And they had to, they had to do a lot of stuff to get their extra, I think they got an extra five percent, including giving away, I think it was a sixty thousand square foot lot. Now, that's a development agreement. This property has only ten percent of its open space versus twenty-five percent required. This is after, if we do this, and only twenty-eight percent of their landscaping when forty percent is required. Why doesn't that require a development agreement? And have we ever given a variance in a commercial Civic Center downtown district property for excess building?
Yeah, let me, I'll try to, I'll get to the second question in a second, maybe I'll need some more clarification on it, but, um, so the first question was, why isn't this project requiring a development agreement? And a development agreement, and Enormous here, you can attest to this, is something the code requires when, uh, the applicant is requesting to exceed the amount of FAR allowed by code. Uh, it's strictly in, it's, um, in the code, and it says, you know, you are, you are, uh, allowed to have a, uh, point one five FAR, however, that number may increase to, in, in some areas, uh, point two percent, or in other areas, up to, uh, two point five, with a development agreement. And the, part of the development agreement, uh, would allow the, the commercial development to have additional square footage, but, uh, to offset that additional square footage, they're then required to provide a public benefit to the city. So that public benefit may come as a form of a check, uh, or it may come as a form of providing some sort of, uh, development, uh, or use that would benefit the city. So to capture that agreement between the city and a developer, um, we, uh, have in place a development agreement in our code. So in this case, they are not asking for additional floor area ratio, uh, they're within the maximum allowed. Uh, they are requesting for variances. Um, now, have we processed a, I think the second question was, have we processed a variance for?
Before we get to that, let me just ask you, the code specifically says FAR, increase in FAR. It's, it does not, you could not do a development agreement to do less, um, less open space or less, uh, landscaping. Because I don't think it precludes it.
So, so with FAR, um, that, again, increase of FAR can be done without a variance because the code already allows it to be done through a development agreement, uh, if the city agrees to the benefits, right?
But does it preclude it? A development agreement?
Does, does the?
Does the code preclude doing a development agreement for violating the landscaping and the, uh, open space requirements for that property?
The development agreement, um, has not been designed for those things, so this is, it's, again, and maybe we can.
It's not whether it's designed, it's whether it's allowed.
I hear you. I, I am not aware of any legal authority that would absolutely prohibit it, however, I will defer to Mr. Fernandez on the past city practices and what the city typically uses.
Because what I'm looking at here is directly next door, we got extorted, in my opinion, but, uh, we semi-extorted this supposed green wall to get this extra, extra, so they could get more, more stuff, six pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag, okay? And in this case, they are violating the, the, the code for the specific area downtown. They are not meeting their requirements, and I would ask our attorney again, something approved by the county is not grandfathered for change. Is that correct?
I, I apologize.
In other words, they're saying, all these poor guys, they got a permit under the, under the county, and, uh, so we got to live with it. Well, that's not when you change something, you don't, that's not grandfathered.
But maybe I, maybe I can focus the question here a little, in terms that, that Adrian might, because what I see here is, you're asking for a variance, I don't see in the analysis what the deprivation would be to not get it as compared to similar properties, et cetera, and/or, uh, would this not be a special privilege for them to begin? I mean, those are the two things that we, we analyze, analyze for variance. I don't see those on, in it, and I think that's kind of what John's getting.
Yeah, we're giving a special privilege, and we have to make that finding.
Correct, yeah. So I would, I would advise the, the commission not to, you know, focus in on what, what is grandfathered, what is not from the county. Instead, look at the application before you, as Chair Hill astutely pointed out, there are findings for this, and if this commission can't make that, that's entirely prerogative.
Well, maybe I can have staff tell us why being able not to follow the rules like everybody else does, uh, and since nobody in, that's a special district, that's not zoned, uh, like everybody else in town. Why, why would we, that not be a special privilege since nobody else has ever gotten it, and it's additional development without meeting the code standards?
So when you say a special district, um.
Special privilege.
No, special district, the, the Civic Center is a special.
So the Civic Center, um, is, you know, the, I think it's the LCP that just identifies the area of the Civic Center, and the only thing, um, in our code that is different about the Civic Center versus everywhere else in the code is what we just described about the, the FAR allowance with a development agreement, uh, for public benefits. So, so the other standards, right, the other commercial development standards apply the same here than they applied anywhere else in the city?
Yes, and they're not met. So my question is specifically, since this is something that has not happened in the commercial zone, and it's substantial, it's ten percent versus twenty-five and twenty-eight percent versus forty. It's not like five, ten feet, it's thousands of feet, okay? Why, how can we make a finding that this is not a special privilege?
And, and so, I mean, if I may, that is, that is up to you all.
No, I know, but I'd like to have input from the staff on how they thought they could get away with it.
Well, again, hang on, hang on, hang on, I mean, Vice Chair Mazza, I understand the point of your question, everyone gets it.
But I'm not getting an answer.
Right, but because it's not, it's not for Mr. Fernandez or Ms. Brooks to answer, it is for you all to, to.
No, I hate to correct you. Their staff, they wrote the staff report, they said, this is cool, go ahead and vote for it, I want to know why.
If you have factual, factual questions, they're, they're, they're there to answer.
That's a factual question.
But asking them to say, you know, how, you know, how dare you is.
No, it's not how dare you, I'm saying, okay, let me ask two questions. They're meeting ten percent of the requirements, twenty-five percent is required for open space. How is that not a special privilege if nobody else has gotten that? Or how did you justify bringing this and saying it wasn't?
So there are a lot of other projects that don't comply with these requirements. Um, now, the, the question is whether those projects were developed under our current standards and whether variances have been granted for them. And, uh, we can think of at least one project, um, and this is the Satan Hands Project, uh, two eight two zero zero PCH, where the planning commission granted a variance for the same, for the same request, which is, they are asking for a variance to not be able to comply with the code, however, they're offsetting the impacts by providing the same amount of open space and landscaping in other parts of the property. So there is, there, there is no net difference.
Okay, John, let, let.
No, no, well, let me finish that then.
I, I think.
Okay, no, no, uh, they are, they are. Why can't they have a two-story building, for example? Why do they, why can't they make that space landscaping or open space? Why can't they have a two-story building? It's an office building. For example, I mean, we have to find that they're not getting a special privilege. They are, they are, it's not that the county approved it, or somebody else in the area has less landscaping or less open space, it is, our code requires, if you want to build something new, you got to follow the rules. Now, we're saying, well, gee, they want to do it this way, but they could do it another way easily and not violate the rules. So why is this, can anybody in that, can, can, uh, Whole Foods come in and say, gee, our, 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 our green wall didn't work, so we want to make it bigger? Uh, or can, can, uh, any of the other shopping centers say, well, gee, uh, they got, they got to do this, so, uh, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll put another building over here and, and, and plant some petunias or something.
Okay, John, John, I think you've made the point that.
No, I want to, I want an answer.
That it's not well justified. You've, you've made that point. Skylar has a, uh, he can add a point of perspective here, if you could put up the site plan, then maybe you want to actually stand up at the, uh, or make just point, but.
No, I, I just, I had a, first a question for staff, maybe if you can't answer the applicant, um, Michael.
Put up the site plan.
Prabhu.
Prabhu.
Prabhu. Prabhu.
Prabhu, okay. Um, Renika? So I'm trying to figure, I, I understand very much John's concern that's being presented in regards to the issues related to the open space requirement on this and the variance for that. My question is, the way that I see this project, there's two points of ingress and egress off of Cross Creek. There's essentially two driveways, so if you could pull up the slide, which shows what's proposed.
I think you can go to like slide four of our presentation, Renika.
That one, which doesn't show.
That'll work.
But, no, that's the existing.
No, it shows that the red is the new. Okay, there you go.
No.
No.
That'll work for you.
Yeah, but this doesn't show what they're.
It doesn't.
No, this is.
The proposed is in white.
Okay, so.
You guys. You want to get up and point at it?
So, no, I can, I can navigate us through that. Okay, so the way that I see this, if I'm looking at table three, um, where the requirement is eight thousand five hundred and sixty-one square feet of open space, but you're proposing only thirty-four hundred and fifty-five.
Correct.
Were you guys required to have two points of ingress and egress from the fire department?
Uh, those were existing points of ingress and egress through the existing building construction from nineteen seventy.
Okay. What I would like to see, and I don't know if it's possible or not, is if, I don't know if you'd have to eliminate one of the driveways, but there's, uh, if we're looking, if we're coming up Cross Creek Road, so there's the first driveway on the left where you would go drive straight down, and then there's a bunch of parking on your left, and the second driveway, you know, I don't entirely see the need for the second driveway, and if we could make that open space and just get around this whole requirement, I know that that may change a little bit of stuff for you guys, and I know you have people here, but I'm trying, if we can do that and.
I believe there.
Avoid this, then we can.
I would ask a question associated with that from the original approval.
Get some support.
Is if you go to where the red-hatched area is on the left-hand side, is where, directly adjacent to that, is where we were required to put our trash enclosure, and we also were asked to have asphalt in that area that you're talking about converting to open space. That was so that a trash truck could get into that area, unload trash, so they weren't loading trash on Cross Creek. loading trash on Cross Creek. And also so that if there was necessary, a fire truck could enter in that area.
Could, could you have open space in the portion?
I was going to reverse it now.
Yeah, but just remember, they need a turnaround.
I understand that they need a turnaround. My next question is for staff. Grasscrete does not do anything to an open space requirement, correct?
Yes, we count that as landscaping, which they, we, so.
It's not open space, but it's, it works for impermeable.
Landscaping is a, it's, it's required to be 40% of the lot area. And the open space is required to be 25% for a total 65. So, but some of the landscape area that is kept as natural can also count as, as open space, if that makes sense.
So if they were to use grasscrete for the front part of those driveways, could you get around this requirement and would they meet it? No.
You can't double dip.
Can't double dip.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What about, what about this portion between the driveways, between the street and the pavilion? Could that be turned into, it looks like there's a, a drive-through right there now, right? Could that just be, just to, so the drivable portion would just become one big loop rather than having that little segment? I mean, that would give you some more, a little bit more open space, right?
Well, let me, let me ask you something. We're also required to make a finding that this is the least environmentally damaging. And would a second story be allowed on this building? And would not that be least environmentally damaging? Would that not provide more open space and, and space?
Okay, that's not what's being proposed, and I don't know if that would work because the building's pretty tall as it is. So I think there would be.
Well, I, I need an answer on that because that would make that finding impossible to make.
So the, the problem with the second story is that there are other residential properties in the area. And so if the second floor obstructs impressive scenes, then the site plan review for additional height over 18 feet will not be approved.
Except that they're all one story and there's no view. So that, there aren't any impressive views from Cross Creek Road.
Well, impressive views would not just be the ocean. It's also the creek. It's also mountains and it's.
Are there any view determinations?
We, we, that was not part of the application, so we didn't do that, but I'm, I'm sure.
Well, let me ask you this. On, on the ranch, if there are impressive views, why did you allow two-story buildings all along the backside of all those properties?
Okay, John, that, that's a past application.
Well, again, it's impressive views. I mean, you can't.
But John, it's not relevant.
You can't go in after Adrian, who's sitting right here from a development agreement from almost 20 years ago with completely different staff. That is not fair.
Yeah, we, we have to stick to, let's stick to this law.
No, no, impressive views do not change over 100,000 years, okay? Flat out, they don't, okay? So you can't just make stuff up that's not an impressive view. And if it were, then other projects in the area would have been limited, and the project directly next to it was not limited. There is a two-story office building within 40 feet of this building.
Well, then you're making the, you're just making the case that it would be fine for them to do two stories.
My point is, and my question is, and it hasn't been answered, is we are required to find the least, the least environmentally damaging and the best solution to the underbuilding of the requirements. These are strict requirements.
That's true, that's true, but what is the question?
I'm going to make the finding that if we allow these designers to design more electric vehicles, that's going to be the least environmentally impactful thing, and they can get back to work, and we can have more EVs on the road, and we'll all be making a positive difference.
Now you're going off the site.
Did you know that Audi just said they're cutting down on production and so did Volkswagen?
All right, all right, guys, guys.
Yeah, because you haven't allowed them to design. All I need is an answer, okay? We have to make certain findings. This, this project is, if you listen to me, this project is self-admitted in the application, not meeting the standards required for commercial development in the civic center area. It is increasing the development when it's not meeting the standards. So other projects, and my point is, and my question is, how can you do that for free? Just let one property out of all the properties down there do it. Nobody else has done it. Not one property. And, and then say, no problem, go ahead. Why can't every other property do that? Why can't the ranch come in here tomorrow morning and say?
Okay, they got the question, they got the question.
Well, I need an answer, that's all I need.
Well, let him answer.
Yeah, I, I think this is a unique project in that they have allowable FAR to play with. Most other shopping centers and commercial development that was approved by the county, they're way over their FAR. So we, the reason we haven't seen any other development in other commercial developed properties is because they don't have any FAR to, to, to increase their development. So this is one where they have additional FAR, but you know, a lot of the property has been developed as a result of their development from the 70s.
Okay, so is there anything in the code that allows this?
The, the variance is a mechanism that's, that's provided to the decision makers to make a decision on whether to approve it or not.
Okay, John, we, we've, we've reached the, the issue that the variance is not well justified. Drew?
I was going to say, this is a decision for the planning commission to make. All these questions you're directing towards staff on them making approvals, they have not made approvals. They've just made a recommendation and presented information to us.
Okay, Skylar, Skylar had some other thought here about what, what else.
Would you pull that slide back up real quick? I'm trying to, I'm trying to get us a little bit more open space on your project. That's kind of what my goal is through this. So I'm going to stand up and kind of try to clarify it.
Do I not have one here?
If you put my.
It has a laser in there.
And while he's doing this, can you find out the height of the building that exists today? Can you do that, Renika?
All right, Mr. Wizard.
Find the height of the building and tell us what it is.
See if I can. Okay, so if we're looking in this area right here, sorry, my hand's shaking.
Existing building is 20 feet, one inch.
Okay, that's this building over here. Correct. But this, these three parking spots right here, is there any way that we can put those over there and then we can cut this off right here and have that all open space in the corner?
So that, the bottom right-hand corner, the in green, is existing landscape. So that's already landscaped. The county, county is part of our open space landscape.
I, I understand that, but.
The stalls over to the side.
Right here.
Right there.
Like, because if we got rid of this right here, then we would capture all this additional open space.
And then we go from 21, which is our required number of parking stalls, down to 18.
No, no, we would have the parking stalls right here. It's going to, it's going to be less square footage.
Excuse me, the applicant, if you could speak into the microphone so that the participants on the Zoom meeting can hear you.
Absolutely. So if, my understanding is where you're pointing in the bottom right-hand corner is landscaping. If we were to convert that to parking, taking those three stalls, wouldn't I be making my, my landscape ratio go down?
No, it would though, because you would be, right now.
This space is a lot larger. We'd be taking all of this space right in this square, right there.
The square, the square behind the cars.
So I'll, so I'll defer to you guys. From a turning radius on those three stalls on the side, do I need the full area or could I, could I increase some of my landscaped area on the top part of that area that Commissioner Peake is looking at? Yeah.
These three spots would move to right here, right? So we would be, this would be a moot point, but we would be gaining all of this, this open space.
As open space.
Because the part, in the new location, it's already paved behind them.
Right, so the, yeah, that's existing decomposed granite, so.
DJ.
So those are, those are inside the secure envelope. But if you take the ones outside of that, then no longer.
Adrian has a, has his hand here. Are you following us here?
I, I am, and I, I thought it was a great idea until I thought about the code, and the code does not allow new parking spaces to be placed within the front yard setback. And where you're proposing those parking spaces is actually the front yard setback.
Well, maybe we need to bring it, bring this back.
Maybe we could make a finding that we could have a variance for that because, and we would need two variances, but it would be giving us more open space, and that would be the, why we could make that finding.
We would, we would be bringing back the item because we would then have to renotice it so that it includes the variance.
You would also be reducing your landscaping.
Can I ask, is that, and turf creek does not qualify as open space?
It, it does if it's not used for parking or driveway.
Just fire department turnaround?
Or turnaround. That's part of the driveway.
So there's no benefit to that?
There's no benefit.
Okay. John?
Well, I.
Would you be, if this were to come back and they were to say, I, I'm going to ballpark that as a net gain of approximately, what is each one of those parking spaces is how wide? Eight feet, 10 feet? 10 feet?
Eight.
Well, because you got to open a door.
Call it eight, because that, they, they allow seven-foot spaces, so eight is.
They allow seven-foot space.
They have, but call it eight.
Can I ask them, how, why did you design those parking spaces?
Nine foot, right?
Those three, those three stalls are nine by 20.
Nine by 20?
Nine by 20 each.
Okay, so I'm going to say you would be getting a net gain of approximately 400 to 500 square feet.
Yeah, that's.
If we were to do that, John, would you be amenable to supporting the variance to allow the parking in the front yard and to approve the project because we would be gaining?
All right, okay, let me answer that. I could not find that this is not a special privilege if you took open space and made it 12% instead of 10 when you needed 25.
So, so it's your opinion that unless they can meet that, the requirement that's in the code, that you're not willing to give that variance at all?
The question is.
Because I don't want to waste a bunch of more time talking about it.
It's not, it's not what I'm willing to do. It's whether the, the LIP in our municipal code says, we, the five of us, have to find that this is not a special privilege.
I don't think that that's exactly what it says, but that's.
That's exactly what it says.
No, it does, it uses that exact language.
I don't, I don't look at it as a special privilege. I look at it as a project that is a very well-designed project, that fits the area of where it is.
Yep.
And that's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah, I know, but what the law says is, that a superior body, either the coastal commission or the city council, determines how things are designed in certain areas and what's required. And then on top of that, the LIP says, you make everybody else do something, you can't just give, throw this guy a bone. Okay? That's what it says. Okay? And those are the two findings we have to make.
Okay, that's, that's.
Now, let me finish.
No, you, you're right. You're right. I have a couple thoughts before we go to questions about what can be redesigned or whatever. I still have questions I haven't asked yet.
I just, the other thing was that the, you know, we're also obviously off on the landscaping too, right? And we're going for the non-conforming, no change with that. I just didn't know if you guys, or John, if you would be more supportive of it if it were to be more open space as opposed to landscaping.
Well, what I'm saying is I believe this property could be designed to qualify. And, and the other finding we must make, and we must make it because that's what the LIP requires, is that it's the least environmentally damaging. And it can be done better than this. For example, a second floor. Okay? This is supposedly an office.
I just don't see you at all ever approving a second floor on a building that's already 20 feet tall.
And they're not going to wait five to seven years for that to happen.
You know, waiting, waiting doesn't mean you get to violate the codes.
In what?
Now, if you say, if we, Dennis, if you say, every decision we make depends on how long somebody waited.
That's not what we're saying.
That's not, that's not kosher.
No.
All I'm saying is you're asking for them to redesign, and it's already here. And there's only a couple of things that need to be done to get this done.
Yeah.
And not complete redesign or a second story.
Okay, so guys, guys. What needs to be done is we have to follow the code.
I think we're, we're at the point where we each have an opinion about how something needs to be handled.
And we also, by the way, let me just add, we also have to unburden the city with all these appeals and all these coastal things. It's just crazy just to violate, every time somebody wants it, to violate what we're required to do.
Okay, so John, and I'm agreeing with him, I think that, that the justification has not been made about the variance findings. Let me add just another question or two for the mix here that we haven't even looked at. Just to get these off the table if nothing else. One, Renika or Adrian, about the zoning here, this is CV1. That is expressly visitor-serving use. I don't understand, I looked at the code, I looked at what you can and can't do in that. I don't understand how basically private office space qualifies in visitor-serving. It's not public facing in any way, right? And, and if, we've already just learned that you can't go there and buy an Audi, so how is this a visitor-serving use of this property?
The permitted uses for this zoning designation are carried over from the previous commercial zoning designation. So let me pull it up, but basically in this section of the code, it defers to the previous commercially-zoned area.
This is part of the civic center overlay or?
No.
Just part of the general code?
Go to the existing use of the building?
I'm sorry?
Is that what you're saying? To the prior use?
No, it sounds like the question was about the proposed office use in the commercial visitor-serving zoning designation. It is a permitted use that is carried over from another commercially-zoned property. So some commercially-zoned properties defer to the previous commercially-zoned section of the code. So let me, let me pull it up in the code.
You're saying it's basically grandfathered? Or no, maybe I'm not understanding?
No, it's just the, the way the municipal code is, is, is written, it, it goes from the more restrictive commercial to the, I guess, the less restricted commercial. And it usually references back to the previous zoning designation, and it says, all those uses are permitted. So I think that's something that Renika is going to check in for you. It's which, which section allows the office building.
I know it's section you're, you know, it's, I guess it's still, okay. And then this is easy to answer, but this is what, phase one of the civic center wastewater treatment? Phase two, phase one?
Yeah, we already tied in. We're tied, we're tied into wastewater treatment.
You're tied in, so, and we're adding a couple fixture units.
And these were all calculated in our original design.
So the original tie-in.
Original design contemplated any fixture count inside of this new building.
But hang on, Adrian, so their, their fixture count is already accommodated?
So, so part of phase one requires that they analyze each property for its full potential. So if the property was underdeveloped in terms of FAR, they account it for the additional FAR.
Okay, it was just, just a question, a wonder. And then I guess my last question would be, this is, this is not a zero-grading project as stated, because you're going to have to do some kind of foundation or footings or something in here. How, how deep would this foundation end up going there? Because this is a, quite a sensitive archaeological zone. And if we're going more than, you know, previously it was graded for a parking lot, right? So if we're going a couple feet down, then we'd want archaeological monitors.
About water monitors.
What, for groundwater level? Yeah.
They pump 200,000 gallons a day next door, two doors down during construction, $200,000 to $400,000 a gallon, gallons a day.
Well, I don't think, they're not, they're not doing an underground parking garage here though, so it's, it's not that, but.
Our preliminary design anticipated using about a 24-inch footing on a mat slab.
That's what I'm imagining, and I think that that's, this is such a sensitive area next to the creek and relative to the, the ancient, I don't know how much familiar you are with the.
Very familiar.
Okay, that, in, in cases where we are in close areas like that, we do say, for all excavation, we want a professional archaeologist observing.
It, it, in that circumstance, we wouldn't have a problem with that. I would just state that for the existing building, when we did put in footings there, we did not uncover any issues.
Okay, so.
Yeah, so that's a condition, if that's a condition, we need to abide by in order to get approval, we would, we'd be willing to do that.
That's maybe the cherry on the cake, and we don't have the cake yet, but.
Let me ask, what, what additions did you make to the existing building? Let me ask, what, what additions did you make to the existing building?
There's an existing mezzanine that was put in there per the approval of the APR that was achieved in 2019.
And that increased the square for the TDSF, Richard? That mezzanine? Adrian, I'm sorry. Did the mezzanine increase the TDSF?
Does the mezzanine increase TDS, FAR, you mean? This is a commercial shopping center, or a commercial-
Yeah, so TDSF is FAR.
TDSF is-
If you increase it, you increase the FAR.
There are two different ways of measuring area. They're, they're not exactly the same.
Okay, they're not exactly, but what I'm asking is, did it, did a mezzanine that made this building bigger that required a footing come before us? It apparently was done over the counter, so it must not have, well, what does it have to do with having footings built?
So there are, there are additions to commercial properties that can be done if they're less than 500 square feet, for example. They can be done without a CUP or a CDP. So any addition over 500 square feet does require a CUP, but they can still be exempt from a CDP.
Even if it doesn't qualify under the, the landscaping and open space?
Well, it, it was interior square footage.
Okay, so why, I'm wondering why interior square footage needed foundation?
Because it was a mezzanine.
So what, what, hold on. Where are you going with this, John?
I'm just trying to figure out what I built.
Adrian totally understood the question that John was asking. So this is going previous to when they did their renovation of the building. They added the mezzanine inside, and they needed to do some foundation work to support that. John's question was, at the, the time when, when that happened, how did, were you asking, how did that change the FAR, and what are you?
Yeah, I'm asking, it seems that there was some building done that required a foundation.
They got permits for, and that's, that was that?
Yeah, that was that. The mezzanine obviously would be adding weight to a structure that probably wasn't designed to hold all that weight, so foundation work was likely required.
Okay.
We, we wanted to answer the previous question about the use, and we did find that professional office uses is a permitted use in the CV1 zone.
Because it's permitted in the CN zone, is that, that's why?
No, we're looking at just what's permitted specifically for CV1. And this is based on the LCP permitted use table.
Yeah, I looked at that, I didn't, I didn't see it.
An office space is a permitted use.
Okay, well, I believe you. All right, I, I think we have a number of thoughts on the table here. You, you can go ahead and sit down, this is just us.
One last question.
Yes, one last question.
No, just, you know, we have this requirement of being the least environmentally damaging and these other things. Do you really need 1,300 whatever to square feet for 13 employees?
Yes, we believe we do. We believe that this is the best use of the, the project for these employees, and we feel-
And then what, they don't have off-
The least environmentally impactful design that we can come up with.
And they don't have offices in the other building?
They have offices. This is designed to be a conference room for their usage.
Yeah, okay. Do we have, we have a motion on the table, or?
Thank you, Michael.
I'll make a motion. I, I move that we, we give the, the applicant opportunity to redesign and try to meet the codes.
So it's, to be clear, it's a motion for a continuance in, in order to do a couple things. One, potentially increase the open space.
I think you just want to meet the requirements for open space and landscaping.
Two, to, to better demonstrate that it's the least environmentally impactful.
To make it more approvable. Yeah, you, you got it, basically. Other than a motion to deny. Because I, I truly believe that this is so far off the requirements of the LIP that it's gonna get appealed, and it's just gonna waste a whole bunch of time.
And the, the other bit, the, the other bit, I'm trying to clarify your motion here, is to more specifically justify variance, what, with, with regard to either the special privilege or the,
Well, I'm, I'm more after-
What would be the denial of a-
Craig, there's, there's two elements to that. If you're gonna go that route, and he's asking them to come back with something and meet all of that stuff, then you're not gonna need a variance. But if you're asking him to reach some different element of that threshold, and you want better, better justification for the variance, that's fine. I just don't think that you guys are gonna get the support for that.
It's not just the variance, it's the findings, okay? And it's a chance, it's another chance.
I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting is-
Rather than go through the whole process of, of spending, you know, another six months, or a year or two, going through-
There it is. There it is.
We waste hundreds of hours every year.
Okay, 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 that's, this is-
Can I ask a question to the applicant?
Please.
Are you amenable to redesign this and come back here in a few months with a design that wouldn't meet all of these standards that they just put up there?
That feels like a significant burden. I'll be just totally transparent. We applied for this in 2019. I think we've worked with seven different planning officials to try to get to this point. I think we've done everything we could to make this the least impactful. We believe that we're adding to downtown Malibu. We believe that this is an improvement to the project that existed in 2015 when we acquired the property. We believe that what we're doing here is for the benefit of the employees and for downtown Malibu. And it would be a burden for us to continue to have to go through this process. We would appreciate an opportunity to get an approval from you.
So you're not, you don't want to do that. So I'll make, I'll cancel that motion and make a motion for denial in the fact that this cannot meet three of the findings specifically.
Okay, I'm gonna make another motion, and my motion's gonna be for approval.
Okay. Do you have a second? Okay, so do you have a second mind, Craig, or does anybody?
I would, I would really like to see us get to a modification through a continuance. It just seems like we, we were getting pretty close to something that would, would work for everybody.
I understand that, but my, my reluctance to go down that road is that I think that this is a very viable project for the area. And I, I tried to maybe suggest some changes that could be done that would get us to possibly a, a better threshold of the open space and or landscaping. I know that one of those proposals, you know, would have added a burden of a different form of variance that we would have had to make findings, and I think we can make findings for that. You know, so while I can propose that, I don't think that that's getting us to a place of getting a unanimous decision. So that's my, that's my reluctance to put that on the table.
Well, I, I would second a, a move to get, because then, then we can demonstrate that it is the least environmentally impactful if-
How do you do that?
Tightening it up, well-
Oh, you mean if you bring it back? They don't want to bring it back?
Yeah, well-
I'm just, I'm, I'm putting it out there, you know, where my thoughts are, like, I don't have a huge problem with this project the way that it is, and I, and I'm comfortable making some findings. If we can get to the place where we could have a more unanimous decision,
Yeah.
I'm, I'm totally in favor of that.
No.
But I don't, I'm not in favor of going down a road where we would be back here with another three to two vote.
But let's, let's ask the applicant, if you have the choice, would you rather take the continuance and tighten it up to address these concerns or take a denial that you can take straight to council?
I, I think my concern with that is, in transparency, is, is listening to Commissioner Mazza, that if we go with one of the scenarios that Commissioner Pete presented, which was to relocate three parking stalls closer to the front, which would create another variance requirement, then we're gonna be in a special finding again, which is again gonna require support from the commission, which it sounds like we might not be able to get in a, in a 5-0 vote, which, transparency, I just wanted to say that's what I'm feeling. Second thing is, is in doing that, then we would only pick up about 2% to 5% improvement on the overall site coverage for, let's call it landscaping at that point, and we're not gonna get near what the 25% threshold was. So that would be a concern that if we go through this process, and we ask, and we, we spend additional funds redesigning the site, and we work with staff to go ahead and get a new report written, and we go ahead and publish this out to the community, we're still not gonna meet the threshold that's gonna meet an approval.
So you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that would be my concern with that.
You would prefer a denial then?
Well, I want to just tell you-
If, if, I don't know if you get that.
My, I was next, wasn't I?
John, yeah, go.
Okay. We, one of the findings you have is it's not a special variance, only for you, okay? We have given many front yard and side yard setback variances. We have not given, go ahead and, go ahead and do whatever you feel like, variances. That's, that's a difference. So if you did move those, that variance could be, could be found. Okay? The others, I don't know how you're ever gonna get the appeal body to say they can, they can make the other two variances, okay? I don't know how anybody could make those.
All right, Patrick?
Yep, so we have a-
We, we have a couple hypothetical motions that have not, or motions that haven't been seconded.
So, so Commissioner Peak's motion to approve was seconded by Commissioner Smith, but go ahead, Chair, Chair Hill.
Okay, so you have the second, and that's the first one that was?
That was-
That's approving it as is.
Approving it as is.
But I, I, we brought that up, and we had some more discussion on it, right? Like, if, if you guys, if, John, if, if you would be willing to say, like, yes, I would like this to come back, and even if it's only, you know, it may, doesn't, maybe doesn't meet that 25% increase that you referenced, or doesn't meet the exact total landscape and open space requirement, you could be more supportive of it and would support it. I know it's kind of hard to see how you're gonna vote on something that's not from you.
Well, yeah, you can't do-
That's, that can help sway me towards, towards doing that.
Making the motion.
But short of that, I think we can make the findings that this can be approved the way that it is.
You can make those findings. You can make them, this is the least environmentally sensitive, this, this is not a special privilege.
Okay, I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make a, I'm sorry, we don't, we don't need to hear anymore now, yeah?
Okay, okay.
Understood.
I'm gonna make an alternative motion to continue to implement these things. Presumably, staff can, can better articulate what justifies the variance, right? Based on what we've talked about. You, you'll have language that, that can do that. I'm seeing nodding heads. So I want to make the motion to continue it, to make it a better project. It may not be perfect, but it'll be better justified.
I'll make, I'll second.
John will second that. So this is, this being a competing motion, an alternative motion goes first.
My question on that is, first to the applicant. If we were to go down that road, and Rick, or Adrian, what is our timeline look on our calendar if we bring this back? How far in advance do you need any redesign for noticing, et cetera, et cetera?
So we're looking-
Rebecca, maybe that would have been very direct.
Yeah, Rebecca can help with that, but we're looking at at least 21 days for a new public hearing to be sent out, so. And then for the newspaper to publish. So we're looking at about a month, maybe.
So I would think that we'd be looking at the end of March. The second meeting in March.
That's just to meet the noticing requirements, and then I'm not sure if the applicant is willing to provide the information necessary within the next few months, or, excuse me, within the next few weeks.
If we did that, would you be able to get something turned around and back into staff in two to three weeks from now? Because what I'm trying to do is continue this to a date certain, so that we could get it and have it as a calendar date if we go down that road.
So, so the answer is, yeah, our design team could work on that to try to get something back to staff in two to three weeks.
Let's, let's make it, okay, thank, that's all we need.
I, I just want to be sure, we would still have to notice it if there's a different variance.
Got it.
Yeah, all right, so let's make it a better project. I've got a competing motion.
You want to do a date certain? I've arranged your motion to a date, sir.
Two-
The last second meeting in March.
Adrian's got a comment.
Yeah, so the only thing that I wasn't thinking about is that we're talking about landscaping, which affects the review of other reviewers. So, you know, this, this may require Public Works to review, you know, new drainage, and, and, and it also would require the city biologists to review the landscaping and plans that they would be proposing in the new areas. So it, and, and, so we, we may need additional time if that is, if that is the case, unless you would like the item back without those reviews.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If we, if we schedule it for the second meeting in March, and somebody in Public Works doesn't, or landscaping, I mean, it's grass, I mean, take a look at the landscaping.
Those seem like de minimis.
If, if they don't get back in time, we can just continue it to the next meeting, right? We don't have to renotice.
That would be correct. I just wanted to make sure that if, if you wanted the item back regardless, that it might not have those approvals.
Let's, let's go for it. Let's, let's-
So you want a second meeting in March, date certain?
Date certain.
Okay, I, I understand that. I just want, one, I want to hear from you, Michael, but my, my second question of, of staff is, would we need to, if that came back redesigned, like, I don't think that we necessarily need to hear all those approvals, provided, you know, in concept, they would be approved. You know, I don't think we need to see all those stamp sheets, but I don't know if we have to see them in order to make that approval. And I'm seeing Rebecca say, you better get those things stamped before you see them.
Let me ask on that. We, we have conditioned many projects to say, subject to approval by the so-and-so department, okay? That's done all the time.
It could be-
I'm trying to do it the reverse, because I'm trying to have less requirements so that it can come back.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You can come back and say, they don't have to have the whole planning department, but the whole, the landscaper count the square footage of what they're proposing.
Okay.
They say, there's 1,400 square feet here, it's subject to, the, the landscape guy didn't get back in time, so it's subject to their approval. Well, they're looking at grass.
Okay.
And agaves and, and cactuses, I mean, it's not like-
Can I ask, you go to the applicant for a second?
I think we have, haven't we?
There, there's only one comment I would want to make is where we placed the pavilion building, this second building on the site, was really to try to maximize some of the appeal of the project. And part of that is there are many 70-year-old fig trees on that property that are absolutely beautiful. If we were to relocate those three stalls from that lower right-hand corner, left-hand corner to the lower right-hand corner, we're gonna lose at least two of those trees. And those are beautiful, and they're part of the character of that street.
Could we relocate those trees?
Those, like-
No, they'd be too big.
Too old.
Okay.
Like, 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 I, I, yeah, they have surface roots, and we're super sensitive to maintaining the character of that street. It's beautiful.
And that's why you presented us with this project, because that's what you think is the best project.
By, by the same token-
We spent a lot of time going through that. So, so I, I just want to, I just want to know, as we go through this conversation, I want that to be part of your calculus, that's all.
By the same token, and we're not redesigning it for you, but if we're talking about potentially turning the space between the pavilion and the street into something green, that, that, that could have some, that might actually enhance the vibe in the space.
If it's, if it's that space right there, that's a lot more amenable than it is.
Then just let, let them do it now. Why, why take it back? Let them agree to the fact that they'll do that change now. Why spend another three months, four months, five months, six months? Because you don't know how that's gonna go once it gets in there. You guys don't deal with that. You never deal with that. You guys just say, oh, do this, do that. You don't know what it's like to go in there and get things done with these guys. They're busy, and things just don't happen that quick.
So you're blaming it on the planning department?
I'm blaming it on the system, because we don't have enough people still to do all the things you need to do. And when you start, when these guys bring a nice project to us, and you think it should be two stories, that's, that's ridiculous.
I do not think it should be two stories.
Okay, guys, I'm calling a vote. I'm calling a vote. Can we have a roll call, please?
What's going on with Skyler's motion?
So the first motion, so you, you take them in reverse chronological order. So the first motion to be voted on will be Chair Hills, seconded by Vice Chair Mazza. If that vote fails, the next motion will then be Commissioner Peak, seconded by Commissioner Smith.
And we, we've clarified the motion already, I don't think we need to do it again, right?
May I confirm, staff, Adrian? You, you guys are good with the direction should Chair Hill's motion pass? Perfect.
I think they are.
Yes.
Let's have a roll call.
Can, can I ask a quick point of clarification?
Please.
It sounded as though you wanted to continue this to the March 18th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, is that correct? Thank you. Chair Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
No.
Commissioner Pete?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, then we have another motion on the table. Without further ado, I think we can call the roll on that.
That's the motion to approve the project as?
As is?
Okay.
Correct.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Hill? Motion carries.
I, I move we have a break.
Yeah, let's take a break. It's 8:42. Can we be back here by 8:50?
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, folks, it's 8:50. Let's get back here, the lights are flashing, intermission is over.
Under where they hide.
All right. Yeah, 4D.
4D, and then where's Commissioner Peake, you see that?
All right, folks, we're ready to go. Tyler, do you want to read all the code numbers, or am I going to?
Uh, I don't have the variances in front of me, actually, I probably could. Yeah, I could probably read them if you want me to.
We, sometimes we, we both read through it twice.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so we're back up here, 4D, 32852 Pacific Coast Highway. Tyler, you've got all the, the verbiage, right?
Yeah, so it's, um, the application is for CDP 21048 for the replacement of a failed retaining wall with two new six-foot retaining walls as part of follow-up to emergency coastal development permit 20-005, including variance 22004 for development on slopes deeper than 2.5 to 1. Variance number 23028 for development in environmentally sensitive habitat area, and variance number 23035 for development within the required bluff top setback located in the rural residential two-acre zoning district at 32852 Pacific Coast Highway.
Okay, so you, you've got a report, right?
I'll begin my staff report, yes, thank, thank you, Jerry. So, this project is located in western Malibu near El Pasador State Beach. The existing single-family residents received a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission in 2001. This original CDP included the original retaining wall, and also included a redirection of a stream course. The natural direction of the stream was to the east of the home, and approved culvert redirected the stream around the home to the west. The picture to the right there shows that redirected stream in blue. After heavy rains that came after the Woolsey Fire, the original stream course reopened, and it compromised the original retaining wall. The applicant then applied for an emergency CDP with the city, which was approved in 2021, and this application addresses the CDP condition, the regular, I'm sorry, the emergency CDP condition to follow up the application with the regular CDP. So as I mentioned, the scope of the project is two six-foot tall retaining walls with four pile foundations and a three-foot separation in between, including a 42-inch tall safety fence atop the wall. There's three variances, as I mentioned before, one for development on slopes deeper than 2.5 to 1, another for encroachment within the required 100-foot buffer of a stream, and another for development within the bluff top setback. The, the new wall is located atop a steep slope at the rear of the property. The wall is within the required side yard setback, but it's not taller than 12 feet, and so it is allowed to be within the setback. Here's a section that shows how the walls were designed, as mentioned, not taller than 12 feet in height. A couple photos from our site visit, there's a 42-inch tall safety railing, as I mentioned, that was included after approval during the plan check process for safety as a building safety requirement, and that safety railing is allowed as the additional height, up to 42 inches, in the LIP and the MMC. So just today, we received correspondence from the MRCA about requiring a lateral public access easement for this project. The California Coastal Trail does exist to the rear of this property, as it does for the entire coastline of the city of Malibu. However, previous case law and city practice has demonstrated that the city has not always required access easements, and so one was not required for this project. The proposed development does not impact public access, and so the findings of LI, LIP Chapter 12 were not applicable. And so with that, staff approves, recommends approval of the resolution 2406, and we're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Before we go to the applicant, can we have disclosures, please? Why don't we start with Dennis?
None.
None.
I, I couldn't get a visit to the site property, I learned today that my emails went to a spam folder. I did look at it on Google Earth in three dimensions, enough to see that the house is on a significant water course that comes all the way down from Charmley Park, and so I kind of wondered how anyone built there in the first place. But I do appreciate the staff report for including the, the bases for the variance requests in, in, like we were talking about on the last item. John?
Craig and I tried to visit the property on Friday, we tried to look through the fence, it's a fortress, you can't see anything, that's all I know.
I went to the site and took a look at the plans and the two retaining walls, and the safety fence on top of it, and talked to the applicant.
Did you learn anything that's not in the staff report?
No other, nothing new.
Okay, what, what do you, John?
Question.
Question for staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Having seen the picture, this is already built, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and is it on a coastal bluff?
Uh, yes, I believe it is.
Okay, so did, did, did coastal get involved since you're not allowed to build on a coastal bluff, other than a trail to the beach?
The Coastal Commission or coastal engineering staff?
Whoever.
Our coastal engineering staff reviewed, and that's why there's a requirement for the bluff top setback. Basically, the way our geologists looked at our coastal engineering department, the top of bluff is behind the house, or to the north of the house. So there's no way to develop this property without being that close to the bluff.
The top of bluff is behind the house?
That's correct, that's the way it's described to me.
How, when was this house built?
Uh, it was just in the early 2000s, it received a coastal development permit from the California Coastal Commission.
It was prior to, prior to the LCP?
It received a city approval in, in 1999, but then we, our LCP was not certified at the time, and so the coastal development permit came through Coastal Commission.
Okay, all right.
So let's have a, the applicant, you've got, who do we have here, Gigi, right? Hi.
And the contractor.
Okay, well, you've got 15 minutes, do we have any potential speakers on this?
There's no raised hands.
No raised hands online, so you can certainly reserve time, or, or, do you not need to speak, or?
Yep. Hi, good evening, I'm Roman James, I was the general contractor, and kind of worked with the structural engineers and Ms. Coyette on the, the building strategy and how everything was presented to the city, so I'm just humbly here to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, we'll close the public hearing portion and bring it back up to the table. Do we have any comments, observations, questions?
I will move the item, since it's a done deal.
I would just ask, does anybody else have a question or anything?
No.
I'm curious about the MRCA's lateral easement request, is there, just from what I can see on the maps and whatnot, it looks like it, you tell me, is or isn't it even potentially passable below there, or is it just...
I wanted to second John's motion for discussion.
Please.
I had another question about that.
Please, but, and, and, you know, my, my wondering concern is, yeah, we should be encouraging public access easements where, where we can, but I wonder if this wouldn't actually be a safety hazard to say, sure, go climb across these rocks, and, like, what, is, is the tide ever low enough to...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually disagree with you, I think that it's...
No, I'm just asking, asking a question.
No, I think that the lateral access easement is complete extortion of a property owner, for the public's property, and I completely disagree with them, because I believe that it should not be the right of the property owner to continue to have to pay property taxes on a piece of their property, which the public will be using. And I completely disagree with that.
Okay, so...
And there should be zero requirement for lateral access easement on this and/or any other project on the beach. And I wish that owners were further advised and notified by their attorneys of what they're giving away when they do such.
I'd like to just comment real briefly, there's some cases where, like, I think in this case, if we put up the picture of the beach, no harm, no foul, since you can't do it anyway, and there's sometimes you want to get the Coastal Commission to like you, so they let you build on a coastal bluff or something. They could have easily denied this at the time, so...
Did the Coastal Commission require a lateral access easement at the time of approval?
Evidently not.
No, and I don't want to grant one now.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about this, I'm just saying there are times that, that's, that helps you.
It looks like staff has something to say, right, no?
Yeah, we, we were just going to ask, answer the, the question...
Yeah.
About whether, if, if there's an area that can be granted as an easement, and there is a very tiny area, the majority is a, is a bluff, and so that is really not usable for the public, and we're talking about, I think at the widest part, about 10 feet wide, between the toe of the slope and the property line. But it, so that's the only area that could be granted as a, as a, you know, as an easement, the rest of it is already public.
How much of the time is the tide low enough to act, to walk around there without getting bashed against the rocks?
That's something I can attest to, having visited that, on that aspect of the property. And I would just say that while it, sometimes it is plausible...
Yeah.
You've got to remember that the mean high tide is calculated over...
Is going up.
Well, it might be going up because of sea level rise, but it's also, I think, calculated over 13 or 18 years, I forget the exact language.
18.
18, so it's changing all the time.
Yeah.
And I didn't think that Adrian made the calculation on the last 18 years of the tide for that area.
I do not. The property, way, it's pretty far from the coast, yeah.
But it, it, the, the wall itself is not in question, it's, it's the question of, it was there, is there...
The sliver of property that's down by the beach is what's in question.
Can you get past, is it more of a safety hazard? It sounds to me like what we have on the table is staff's recommendation... It sounds to me like what we have on the table is staff's recommendation, which does not include the easement, right?
Well, the situation is, they don't want to give it, and we can't make them. So why bother discussing it?
I just wanted to be very clear that there is no approval or granting any lateral access easement for this property, and my support for it.
Okay, all right. So I think, without further ado, I think we could call the roll.
Vice Chair Massa?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Absolutely.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. We just rewrote tomorrow's newspaper by getting, having a unanimous decision here.
Thank you guys very much.
No, you, you guys moved the agenda to a certain, so 5A is the next agenda.
Yeah, we're okay. So now that, we are now on to 4E. Oh, no, that's the continued. So we're on to 5A. And this is Tyler again. Okay, Tyler, you read it last time. I'll read it this time. This is coastal development permit number 22-018 and lot line adjustment number 22-001. Application for a lot line adjustment, 6300 Zuma Mesa Drive. Staff report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Hill. Members of the planning commission, next items for a lot line adjustment, as mentioned. The parcels are located on the inland side of Pacific Coast Highway, due east of King and Doom Road. Although three assessor parcel numbers are assigned to the lots, only two legal parcels exist. The applicant obtained certificates of compliance for the two legal lots prior to the completion of this application. The existing lot lines are shown in green here, and the proposed lot lines, or lot line, excuse me, is shown in red here. Although Lot A is getting smaller, it will still be in compliance with the lot development criteria of LI P Chapter 3 for its zoning. Lot B is currently out of compliance, but will increase in size and therefore come into compliance with its requirements of its zoning. An existing single-family residence exists currently on the two lots. Bisects the current property line that is proposed to be adjusted. The lot line adjustment will allow the home to reside on one lot and thus creating a vacant lot on the other parcel. The only other thing we have to add is that today, or not today, but last week, we received a concern from a neighbor who was, who had mentioned their concern, not necessarily of this project, but with maybe future projects, of future subdivisions that could happen. They cited narrow road widths and some concern with increased density causing fire and emergency services to be a problem. And with that, we recommend adoption of Resolution 2404. We're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. John, you have a quick question?
Yeah. You're, when, did we do, Craig and I went and visited the lot. I don't know if we did disclosures or not.
We're about to do, we're about to do disclosures.
You want to do that first?
Yeah, sure. Dennis?
I spent a lot of time riding motocross bikes on that property as a child, so I'm quite familiar with it.
I saw those ruts.
I haven't, I haven't been up there in a while, but I don't think the land's moved very much.
Yeah, I went up there with John. We took a look at it. I also had a conversation with Norm on Saturday. He, the applicant does have plans to divide the remaining 4.8 acres into three lots. Their intent is to do that work with the city separately, taking it a step at a time. The deeds were recorded on different dates, and there's some confusion about them because they apparently were handed around between family members. And so not all the paperwork was properly done at every point. He can explain that more if we need that. And I think that's it in terms of disclosures. John?
Okay, visited the lot. I did notice that there are three short-term rental units on the property.
Right.
Two on the bigger property and one on the smaller property. They're, they're labeled, "Welcome to Malibu", "Have a time at Sunnyside Cottage", blah, blah, blah. So there's no question what they are. My question is, are those scheduled to be torn down in this, in this, since you reported they were, the lots were vacant?
There's no structural development, including demolition proposed. The new lots would basically put all those structures on one lot.
No, they'd be on two.
Right now, they're on two, but the lot line will be adjusted as so where there will be a vacant parcel.
Yeah, they would end up on one, but are those permitted?
The short-term rentals?
Yeah.
I don't have that answer. I can, I can follow up with our code enforcement department, who runs the short-term rental program, and get it back to you.
Can you show me the lot adjustment then, again? I thought, the line is not where, is it the green line where it's changing to?
The green line is existing.
The red line is proposed.
Oh, okay, so they all would be on Lot B. Okay, gotcha. Now, second question is, this is a lot line adjustment involving two lots, and if they're coming in with four more lots later, that's got to be a subdivision, correct? So this will be a subdivision coming up? So there's no problem, we're not creating, it's counted in that process, right?
That's, that's correct. So if the creation of two lots or more, up to four, it's a parcel map, or five would be a tract map, that would be a separate application.
And that's a serial development? If it's, we do this here now, and four months from now, they do the other four?
I mean, it's not serial, I mean, we call these piecemeal projects, but, or you can call it serial development. But, but yes, they can, once this application is approved or decided on, they can come back and submit a new application.
But that application would be a subdivision, not a lot line adjustment or division?
It's hard to say whether, what the plans would be in the future, but they do have another property next door, so they may decide to do a lot line adjustment or a parcel map. That's for the applicant to decide at a later time.
Let's, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant. Norm, if you, whatever you want to say, you know the drill. You've got 15 minutes. Do we have anybody online waiting? Or I don't have any other speaker slips here, so.
There is no raised hand.
Nobody online, Norm, so you've got 15 minutes. Reserve what you'd like, and.
Well, I'm going to reserve most of it because to me, it's a very simple project. We start out with a small lot that is 0.39 acres, less than 40% of what's required, with a house that straddles the property line. We're doing a lot line adjustment from a parcel that is 5.86 acres, and we're giving some of that parcel to the other parcel, the small parcel, making it 1.47 acres, bringing it in compliance with the requirements as the staff stated. Right now, we have 5.86 acres, and if we wanted to do a subdivision, the zoning is one unit per acre. We can make an application for five, leave the small lot the way it is, and end up with six. That's really not our intention at all. We simply want to make sure this house does not cross the property line. And that, my understanding is, with regard to the small buildings that are Airbnb, those are registered with the city of Malibu. The city acknowledges those buildings exist and were, were built legally. There were three others, actually, that did not survive the fire and were not rebuilt. So they're gone. They're history, with no intention of rebuilding them. So it's a simple lot line adjustment. What we do in the future, if we do something in the future, that will be the future. Right now, in the 37 jurisdictions I've worked in in my 45 years, this would be administrative. It wouldn't come before a planning commission. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have. I think the staff did a great job, and we're in favor of the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. No speakers online, right?
There's one raised hand now.
Oh, we have a raised hand. Okay, don't go away, Norm.
Joe Drummond?
Joe, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I just had a question about the three units. Are they on one lot? And how can three short-term rentals be on all one lot? Like, how is that allowed? If that is the case, because it shouldn't be? I mean, there shouldn't be three short-term rentals on one property, unless it's just two on one and one the other. But even then, two on one lot can't be allowed either, so that's my question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. All right, with that, we will close the public hearing portion and bring it back up to the table here. I'd like to just ask the first question here, following on what Norm said. Why is a CDP required when it's, when he's applying for an LLA? I don't recall that that, is that always the case?
Yes, the code requires a CDP.
Okay. And then I guess, following Joe's question, if we're bringing this into compliance, is the act of doing the LLA sufficiently significant enough to trigger looking at what's actually on the property now and saying, oh, no, you can't have multiple dwelling units on there like that? Or that, that would still be grandfathered? How does that work?
I didn't do any research. This question wasn't presented to me before, so I apologize. We can most certainly look up to see how many short-term rental permits they have. There are cases where if they have legal units, they can rent out more than one, they can have more than one short-term rental on one property.
Well, the question would be, if they were just building this from scratch today, new, it would not be legal because it's too many residential units. So there's some kind of grandfathering component you're looking at here, but, and so, in, in, does the lot line adjustment trigger a review such that that would, the grandfathering would go away? Or are they, they, what's the interaction there?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can also add a condition of approval that requires us to look into it and make sure that prior to the recordation, there's a requirement for the applicant to record a certificate of compliance that formalizes the lot line adjustment. So prior to the recordation of that document, the city can verify that all structures on the property are legal structures, and that if they're not, that there would be a time for them to remove them or to submit an application for them.
Okay, I'm sorry, did you say that's a condition we would put in, or that happens automatically?
No, no, that would be a condition that you would add to it. I agree that because they currently have two properties and some buildings straddling between the property lines, that it's hard to tell whether some of these structures were approved to be on one property as an accessory structure, for example. And now that they're all going to be combined on one lot, then that could create some problems having three units on one property. So I think we need to research that and make sure that, for one, that the buildings were legally established and that this lot line adjustment doesn't create a non-conformity by allowing, or create a code violation by allowing more units than what, what they were intended to have.
And for the record, it may be, and maybe Norm can answer this, maybe four units on the property now because the way the signage is posted, it looks like there's one, they each have a name, and there's one called "The Farm". It's hard to tell whether "The Farm" refers to sort of a side building of the main house or whether it's the whole house.
I'll make this very simple.
Yeah.
The, I believe the, all the structures were constructed prior to cityhood. Okay, if that's true, they're legal non-conforming. If it's not true, and they were built illegally, they will be torn down.
Right.
Simple.
Okay, so that's, all right. Questions? So we, we need, we should put that condition in, right?
Well, and, and maybe that's why we're simplifying it because there's a question about whether the buildings are legal, but then there's a separate question about whether the uses are legal, right? So whether.
You can only have two residences on a property.
Exactly. They may have been approved to have like a barn or an accessory structure, a studio, and it may have been converted into a habitable unit, and that could still be an issue as well. So we need to research both the uses and the buildings to make sure that whatever is currently there were items that were previously approved.
So theoretically, we, right now, we'd be looking at an approval subject to?
If I could add also, when our code enforcement department or our, you know, whoever's issuing a short-term rental permit, there is some of that review into the legalization of buildings. We're not going to issue a short-term rental on an illegal use or an illegal structure. So some of that research might have already been done. We just have to kind of collect that and get back to you with it.
Okay, and as Adrian just alluded to, that might change when the line changes with respect to where the parcels are.
True, but the house currently resides on both, the main residence currently resides on both lots, right?
Right.
So what you're, what you're suggesting is that maybe there's an ADU on either lot, right?
I'm suggesting that some of it right now might be on Lot B, and in doing the adjustment, suddenly it's all on Lot A.
Right, so that will, we will confirm, but.
Drew, Drew, yeah?
I was gonna go further with Craig's comment. Can we make it a condition as part of this approval?
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to move the item with, as, as staff recommends with the condition you just read, added about the other structures.
To, to be clear, and I'll second that, but the condition of approval is to make sure that both the structures are in some sort of compliance, and the use of those structures is in some sort of compliance, first in regards to the buildings as a structure, but then with how they're being used in reference to the SDR.
Correct. I just want them to use their own language.
Good.
That's correct.
All right? Happy with that, Patrick?
Rebecca, is that good?
Patrick?
Patrick, do you need them to read the language?
No, I mean, I think if that's appropriate direction from, from city staff, that's good.
Rebecca, is that good? Okay.
All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Chair Massa?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
You sounded reluctant there a little. Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we're on to now, what, we're back to 4A? Is that right now?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And we got to let Drew leave.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Okay, we'll shuffle some papers here. Give us about a minute to sort of reconfigure here. All right. Got a handful of speaker slips here. We are looking at item 4A, conditional use permit number 18-003, an application to allow 50 events per calendar year at the Tranqus Country Mark, shopping, Country Market Shopping Center, which will consist of live music performances and movie nights. Events are expected to have between 50 to 100 attendees each. Staff report, please.
Hello, good evening. I am back. So the project is located at the Tranqus Country Market Shopping Center. If you want me to reiterate the residential uses or just skip through that. The area in red is the project site where the events will be held. It is an existing common area lawn within the shopping center. It is about 56 by 60 square feet in size, and it is located at the western portion of the parcel in the center of four commercial use buildings. And then this is just a close-up of the site. Since the original staff report was published, the applicant team had requested changes to the original proposal in response to public comment, as well as some requested edits to their seasonal scheduling. to their seasonal scheduling. And those updates were captured in the report update and in this presentation. The current proposal before you tonight is to allow for up to 50 annual events in the form of live music performances and movie nights with estimated turnouts of 50 to 100 attendees. No permanent development is included in this proposal. All setup elements for the events, the movie screen speakers, et cetera, are temporary. That will be set up and taken down same day. However, there will be no food or drinks sold at the events, but it should be noted that there are existing tenants at the shopping center that do sell food and drinks as part of their permitted uses. As shown in this slide, there will be one event every three weeks on either Thursday or Friday from between January to Memorial Day weekend. From Memorial Day weekend to Labor Day, there will be one to two events per week on Thursday and/or Friday. Then, from Labor Day to November, it would be back to one event every three weeks on Thursday or Friday. And for December, there would be one event per week on either Thursday, Friday, or Saturday. The movie nights are proposed from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. on Thursdays. The live music performances would be from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Fridays. For the Saturday option, available in December, those would be live music events that would be for up to three hours in duration, but could take place between the window of 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Holiday events would take place between 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. and would either be live music or a movie night. The holidays are defined to include holiday eves, such as Christmas Eve, and holiday weekends, including the... Basically, the Saturday or Sunday prior to Memorial Day. City staff received numerous correspondence for this item. The correspondence that was provided prior to the updated report being published are included in your attachments. Since this update was published, we received additional correspondence, which has continuously been provided to the planning commissioners, including several that were received this afternoon. The correspondence received is a mix of support in addition to voicing concerns and opposition to some elements of the proposal, most commonly related to concerns about the amount of events, noise, traffic, and parking impacts. In response to the earlier comments, the applicant team had reduced the total amount of events from the originally proposed 75 to 50, and noise and traffic were analyzed in the report. The majority of correspondence received this afternoon pertain to an inability to oppose the events if they become a nuisance or offensive to neighboring residences. Residents are able to file complaints if the use is creating a nuisance, and that information can be used toward condition number 44 that does allow the city to modify the conditions of the CUP after the fact if the planning commission determines that the use is creating a nuisance. With that, staff recommends adopting Planning Commission Resolution 24-07 as conditioned.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much, Samantha. And before we go to the applicant, let's have disclosures, please. Dennis?
I live up the street, like one of the concerts, like all that, just like Scotty said earlier. It's nice.
Well, I don't live up the street, but I guess my comments would be the same.
Okay. I did visit the space with John on Friday. I spoke with Pat Healy. She said that the applicant never consulted with the Malibu West Neighborhood Organization. She also mentioned that some of the events have hundreds of people attending them. We spoke with Taylor at Christie's, who also offered that some of the events have several hundred people. Apparently, several Malibu West neighbors thought maybe 300 or more have happened. The only time I've been there for an event in recent years was the Malibu Rebuilds Expo in 2019, and there were several hundred people there then. Also, I should note that I do have background as an audio engineer for live sound venues in particular. For example, I've been an audio engineer at the Topanga Days Festival. I've designed four studios, so I can talk about decibels and real-life measurements of perceived loudness and that kind of thing. John?
I was just gonna say, Pat also reached out to me, but we didn't get to talk on the phone today because I had a crazy day, so...
Okay. I briefly talked with Pat. And I don't remember when it was, but I listened to a discussion at the city council about TUPs and events and events that had been established. It wasn't specific to this item.
And Drew's gone. Yeah, I wanted to mention that there has been some talk about the city council and TUP, but I think we can get to that in the flow of things. So let's go ahead and hear from the applicant first. I think we have Ken Erlich here and Ernest...
Guardiana.
Guardiana.
I gave my time to Mr. Guardiana, but I also wanted to remind Vice Chair Mazza that they spoke.
Hey, hey, hey.
Oh, that's right.
He's... For the record, Ken Erlich is reminding John that they spoke.
And I remember. We spoke.
And did you learn anything new?
No, I didn't. I read his letter. It was quite comprehensive.
I also spoke with Ken today, and I didn't learn anything.
Oh, now the truth is...
Yeah. I called him back. He called me.
I got a phone message from him, but I didn't have time to call him back. All right. So, Mr. Guardiana, there are a few speaker slips here, and there may be some people online, so if you'd like, you might want to reserve some time to respond if need be.
Yes, thank you.
With that, you've got 15 minutes. Go ahead.
My name is Ernest Guardiana, and I represent Zuma Beach Properties, which owns the Trancaus Country Market and is the applicant for this project. So this conditional use permit would legalize the long-running movie nights and concerts on the center's grassy lawn, would provide a real benefit to the shopping center, its tenants, and the community, and it includes conditions of approval to mitigate potential impacts to neighbors. Now, the types of events generally consist of family-friendly movies on Thursdays from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., depending on when the sunset occurs, live music on Fridays from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and then holiday and holiday weekend music and movies from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. As staff noted, the events are located in the common area's grassy lawn. Now, I'd like to provide some background on this application. So back in 2017, the events were started to generate interest in the center and as a way to gain community support and goodwill and to help with the center's tenants. Now, although the community generally supported these events, certain community members noted that these were not specifically permitted under the center's entitlements. After discussion with the planning department staff, we initially submitted our application back in 2018. Now, since that time, we've prepared numerous studies and responded to countless questions from staff. We specifically had two traffic studies prepared, a noise study, and a photometric study. Now, the community generally supports these events. Earlier today, we submitted a petition containing approximately 100 signatures from community residents. We've had other community members submit letters in support, including Hans Letts, who's very vocal in his views of the center, and numerous center tenants have submitted letters in support. Now, we also received some community concerns, mostly from members of Malibu West, raising issues with noise, parking, and the number of events sought. And we've taken these concerns seriously, and I want to go through the measures the center has implemented to address these concerns. Let's start with the number of events. We initially requested 75 events, and upon hearing Malibu West concerns, we reduced that to 50. Now, I know that 50 events might still sound like a lot, but I want to kind of give you the breakdown to under... So that you can better understand how the center is going to allocate these events. So between Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends, there'll be movies on Thursday nights and concerts on Friday nights. That's a total of 30 events right there. And as we understand, the Malibu West community has generally supported these, and even their letters in opposition state that they support the summer concerts and events. In addition to those, we also have an additional four events for the summer holidays, consisting of Memorial Day, Juneteenth, July 4th, and Labor Day. Sometimes, depending on the day of the week in which the holiday falls, the center may have an event on the Saturday or Sunday before or after the holiday. In December, the center likes to have Christmas carolers, who are not amplified, but just go, you know, singing around the center. That would be another five events. And that leaves us with about six to seven events to schedule throughout the year, you know, potentially one in January, February, March, April, October, and November. That's what the 50 events consist of, and I'd like to stress that there may be non-summer months when the center chooses to have no events at all. Now, I want to go on to the parking issues. So we had a traffic study prepared, which specifically noted that parking is not expected to be impacted as the market supplies in excess of 54 parking spaces beyond the required parking for the permanent site uses. Now additionally, with the implementation of the temporary traffic control plans that have been prepared for the events, parking and traffic issues are not anticipated to occur in either the non-summer or summer period as long as the market driveways continue to remain open, and there's a condition of approval which requires those driveways to remain open. And let me break this down a little bit further. The center has 339 parking spaces, which is 15 more than required, 54 more than is required. The event generally has between 50 and 100 attendees, and many attendees drive together. And the events also generally occur outside of the peak parking demand in the center since they're held in the evening hours. Now, the center will provide additional staff to direct all of the cars into the two main parking lots, the front parking lot A and the back parking lot B. There's also a proposed condition of approval that requires the center to provide sufficient event staff to ensure the traffic does not back up onto PCH or any public street. Now, we understand that there's still concerns that this may not be enough parking. It's our belief that these 54 spaces is more than enough to accommodate the events, but to the extent that the commission would like, we're also open to having a condition allowing any overflow parking into the employee parking lot. And the way that we would propose this happening is that staff would initially direct all the parking to the first... To the front and back parking lots. To the extent that those are full, staff would then direct traffic to the employee lot and then act as a crossing guard on Trancaus Canyon Road to ensure the safety of any pedestrians crossing from the employee parking lot to the main center during the event. That's why we believe that parking is not an issue. Now, I'd like to lastly go to noise. We hired Venoclozin, which is a very reputable noise consultant that has prepared numerous studies in the city to prepare the noise study here. That study found that the events will generate between 0 and 4 decibels above ambient noise levels. Now, for reference, an overall noise level increase of 3 decibels generally refers to the barely noticeable difference in perceived loudness in humans, whereas 5 decibels refers to a noticeable change in sound level, and a 10-decibel increase in overall noise generally refers to a doubling in perceived loudness. Now, here, the closest residence is about 260 feet from the proposed event area. Now, the concerts, with the types of equipment and sound systems that will be used, will have a maximum noise level increase of 4 decibels. That's barely noticeable. The movie nights will only have a maximum noise level increase of 2 decibels, which is actually less than barely noticeable. Now, for these reasons, we do not believe that the Malibu West residents will be impacted by parking noise or the number of events. Now, in addition to all of that, the conditional use permit contains a number of conditions of approval to hold us to this. So for example, the conditions of approval limit the number of events and limit their hours to the early and mid-evening. It has a maximum number of attendees allowed. We ensure that no alcohol is sold or served. Additionally, there's no event lighting, and the events must be compliant with the dark-skies ordinance. The maximum sound levels for the sound systems, as studied in the noise study, must be met and cannot be exceeded, and the center must comply with the city's noise ordinance. We also have a good neighbor policy, which requires the center to respect the rights of the neighboring properties and to ensure compliance with the city's noise and smoking ordinances and all conditions of approval. In addition to that, we have the first annual inspection to ensure that we're complying, and then we have a second inspection five years after approval. And if we are not meeting any of these, there's a condition that allows this council... Or this planning commission and the city council to revoke our CUP. Now, with that said, I'd like to introduce Mike McAndrews, who's the property manager for the property, and Adrian Caso, who is the manager of Vintage Grocers, who can explain what these events mean to them and to the center.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name's Mike McAndrews. I'm with Tiara Real Estate, and this is Adrian with Vintage Grocers. I manage a shopping center, and Adrian is the general manager of Vintage Grocers. I first want to thank the commissioners for hearing our application. The intent of these events are to bring the family, friends, and our community together. We want to give the community a place to shop, to dine, to work, to gather, and to play together. Our events, especially the movies on the Friday, have done that in the past for the West Malibu community. Additionally, we need to support our tenants within the center that serve this local community. Since the center is not on the beaten path, these events are pivotal for the exposure of the shopping center. It's going to be vital for the success of all the tenants in the center. Our events have, and we hope to continue, received the support of the community. We strive hard to be a good neighbor and to be a partner with the city. We hope the commission feels the same way, and we respectfully ask for your approval.
All right. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Adrian Caso, representing Vintage Grocers. The concerts have, you know, started in 2017 and just wanted to basically do it for the community, have someone up north to just kind of gain and have a little bit of fun. The events that we do during the holidays are just to bring the kids out to have a good time during the holidays. We have carolers, Santa Claus, things like that. So we just want to continue to provide a service to our community, especially up there, to enjoy it, come out and have a good time. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'd like to reserve the rest of our time for rebuttal.
Okay. You've got 5 minutes and 5 seconds... 6 seconds. Being generous tonight. All right. So we now have some public speakers. Mr. Wetton, would you approach the podium, please? Welcome. It's been a while. Haven't seen you in a bit... Yeah.
We have an empty seat up here.
Yeah. For the record, he's a former planning commissioner, and you've got 3 minutes.
Great. Thanks. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the planning commission. I'm respectfully asking you to deny the conditional use permit 18-003 to allow 50 events per year at the Trancaus Country Market. And having said that, I want to say that I'm a fan of the music concerts down there, and most of the people that I talk to feel the same way, and I hope that there's a process where we can permit those concerts and keep it the way it's been, Friday night concerts from Memorial Day to Labor Day. As far as the rest of them go, you know, first of all, a CUP is not the correct vehicle to permit these events. The correct one would be a TUP. So again, I hope that's addressed when the TUP issue's addressed so that, you know, these events can be permitted properly. A granting a CUP is an entitlement that is hard for the public to remove once it's in place. In fact, the city of Malibu has never revoked one, to my knowledge. You'd basically be granting an entitlement to the applicant and taking away the rights of neighbors who might have issues down the line with the types of events being held. Assuming that I'm correct and the TUP is the appropriate tool, there's a reason that we limit the number that can be granted. If you remove or grossly modify the number of TUPs that can be granted, you're effectively changing the usage. In this case, we'd be going from a commercial shopping center usage to an entertainment or event use. This is not what was contemplated when the project was vetted and approved with the public's input. There's no precedent for issuing a CUP for a series of events. This amounts to an attempt at an end run around the TUP process, and if you choose to go down this road, you're opening the door for other shopping centers in Malibu to bundle dozens of events and be granted CUP that could live on in perpetuity. First of all, we know that it's not difficult to find an expert to give you a study that shows that the data works for your application. Being one of the closest houses to the center, I can give you a real-life assessment of the situation. The estimate of 50 to 100 people attending the Friday concerts is very understated. Parking is a problem and cars on both sides of Trancaus, and I can hear the music from my house very clearly. Thank goodness, we like most of the types of music, and as I've said, I don't mind a limited number of concerts, and we're willing to bear the traffic and parking and other inconveniences that go along with it, but it would be a different story if we had to endure that 50 times a year. I think there's some wisdom in the idea that there can be too much of a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Pat, you're right. Pat, you're right down there. And let's see, after Pat, we will have Tracy Wirick.
Good evening. Malibu West is not opposed to the summer concerts for 50 events a year, with 35 of them at least having amplified sound, and not enough onsite parking is unacceptable. The CUP has to be denied. More than six of the proposed events for Tranqus is seeking approval are unknown. You can't approve a CUP for unknown events, since the city has no ability to evaluate them, to determine whether they jeopardize the public's safety or create a nuisance. This CUP explicitly violates the municipal code. Under the zoning code, temporary use permits are required for these events, not a conditional use permit. A TUP provides a process for evaluating and approving certain events and ensuring that the interests of the community are safeguarded. Under the CUP, the city cannot protect its residents, and public participation is taken away. Whether it be a year from now or 100 years from now, residents will have no input into whether these events should occur. Once granted, CUPs last forever and are almost impossible to revoke. Since parking mitigation measures are based on less than 100 attendees, and many of the summer events already attract at least 100 attendees, the parking mitigations suggested by Tranqus are faulty, not reliable, and are ineffective. The commission can't rely on them. There are not enough spaces at the market now, including the employee lot for some of the concerts. As population increases, there'll definitely not be enough parking onsite, and cars will have to park in front of Malibu West, creating a nuisance. In attempting to justify the CUP, Tranqus' solution is to claim the noise studies indicate that the noise levels are within acceptable sound limits, and therefore okay. Well, it's not okay when at least 35 amplified sound events are clearly heard by affected residents year after year and year after year after that. Many residents can enjoy being outside on summer nights and stay inside where they can still clearly hear the sound from these events, from the loud music. Eight of the 12 findings can't be made for the CUP, and it's not consistent with the general plan. There's a possible equitable solutions exist, and they need to be worked out between Tranqus and its neighbors, and these agreed events can be achieved by amending the temporary use permit conditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. Now, Tracy, Tracy Wirick, oh, there she is. Welcome. And after Tracy will be Kristy.
Hello, good evening. I'm Tracy Wirick. I'm the HOA manager for the Malibu West Swimming Club. I'm here to speak on behalf of the board of directors. Malibu West has no objection to the Friday evening summer concerts that take place outdoors on the green between Memorial Day and Labor Day, between the hours of 6 and 9. Since they are limited in number, many of our residents who are negatively impacted by the concerts, but in the spirit of being good neighbors, are willing to live with them despite the nuisance and inconvenience they may cause, even when most of these concerts have well over 100 attendees. There is no doubt that the center should be applying for a TUP rather than the CUP. These events fall under the category under the Malibu Municipal Code, so it is our understanding that the planning commission will be hearing this next month with recommendations from the city staff to allow more than six TUPs a year. We just respectfully ask that this hearing on the CUP be postponed until after the outcome of that hearing. There's no urgency to make a decision tonight, since the shopping center has no specific events listed in the staff report occurring between now and Memorial Day. So, thank you in advance for considering these valid concerns for the Tranqus shopping or the closest neighbors. So, thank you again for the consideration from the homeowners association. Thank you.
Thank you. And who else did I mention? Kristy, do you want to come up? Now, you're not part of the applicant team, right? Yeah. What were you wanting to say?
I was going to give her the... She's a member of the association, so she gets 5 minutes.
Go ahead.
The concerts bring joy, brings a lot of joy for the community. Where else can you see grandparents dancing with their grandchildren, listening to live music? We provide a free event in which Malibu residents of all ages can enjoy. There's something magical that happens on the grass. People connect. We get to showcase some local talent. Neighbors get to visit with neighbors that they haven't seen throughout the year, and they get to catch up on a Friday night in the summer. The Friday Night Summer Concert Series gives residents an event close to home in which they don't need to leave Malibu to enjoy. Aside from the concerts, the CUP would allow us to do different events, such as the Halloween Costume Contest, Pictures with Sana, or movie nights. We're really trying to build a sense of community at Tranqus Country Market that is needed in the world now more than ever.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any Zoom speakers?
There's two raised hands versus from Kelsey.
Kelsey?
Kelsey.
Kelsey, can we hear you? Go ahead and try speaking.
Kelsey, you should see a pop-up to unmute. You want to go to the next speaker?
Yeah, let's go. Let me guess. No, I won't guess. Go ahead.
Joe Drummond.
Joe, go ahead.
Hello again. So, I live in Big Rock, and I have gone to several of the concerts in Tranqus in the summer. My daughter's actually performed there. So, I do support the summer events, and I don't mind a movie night on Thursday, or that would be fun for the kids, I think, in the neighborhood, but I do have concerns about temporary use permits versus conditional use permits. I do think that it is worth possibly waiting, because I have always supported temporary use permits being greater for the summer series concert events, like they used to have at the Lumberyard, until they destroyed the Lumberyard with the James Pearce thing coming. So, I don't think there will be any Lumberyard concerts anymore, so the Tranqus concerts will be necessary for the community and for gatherings. And they are always more than 200 people, I know that, but it's still, I've always had, there's always plenty of parking. I have no problem parking there, so I don't know, that doesn't seem to be a concern. But I do think it might be worth waiting till the TUP is passed before passing this one, and I think that there should be a Halloween event and a Christmas. The carolers are great, but they shouldn't be all year round. Like, mostly the summers, if they want to have them two times a week, I think that's great. Halloween, Christmas, and I think that's good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Do we want to circle back and see if Kelsey is...
She already lowered her hand.
Okay. All right. Then, there being no other public speakers, you'd like to, you've got 5 minutes and something to rebuttal?
Yes, thank you. So, let me first start off with the mechanism. I've heard a lot of comments about that this should be done through a TUP as opposed to a CUP. I want to point you to page 9 of 13 in the staff report that specifically states that the municipal code conditionally permits the use of live entertainment and cultural and artistic uses. The proposed live music performances are a form of live entertainment, and movies provide the public an opportunity to view, as a community, various film styles, themes, as well as historical and cultural elements. The project is also conditioned to comply with all applicable provisions of the municipal code. The conditional use permit is the correct way to do this. What you are doing is allowing there to be limited duration of these types of uses, the live entertainment and the movies. That's all that we're asking for. The TUP, on the other hand, first off, is only limited to six, and we have no idea how the TUP process allowing more than six is going to play out with the city. For that reason, we believe that the CUP is the correct mechanism for this. One of the other things discussed was that the events are unknown, and that, you know, that certain of the events are unknown, and that they should therefore be required to have a TUP. That's actually how this conditional use permit is drafted. All that we are allowed to do are the live music events and the movies. That's it, on the center's grassy lawn. That's all that's allowed. If we go to anything else, we have to get a temporary use permit. And the last thing that I want to note is, whereas Malibu West was stating that they support the summer concerts, I'd like to note that the movies also have been happening during this time, and we had heard absolutely no opposition to those. With that said, that's all that we have. Thank you. Yes, of course.
Oh, I'll let you, you're going to close the hearing?
Go ahead and ask him.
Okay. How many movies have you had in the last three years?
Give me...
Approximately.
Probably 12 or so.
Okay, so 3 or 4 a year. So, there's not much for people to comment on. Now, you say the other events, other than movies and music, you need a TUP for. Why are we considering 50 TUPs under the CUP?
So, would you like me to give you the breakdown of the events?
Well, I know the breakdown of the events, but I guess I should ask staff.
But John, as chair, let me frame some things here. You're jumping into something, I think I'd like to guide this a little more. I've got a couple layers of how we want to look at this, so we're not just jumping all over. But the first thing, general overview, the basic issue is here that we have residents saying that they would like some events, and I think they would like more than you could get with just the TUP scheme, as it is now, 6 per year. But they want somewhere maybe closer to the 6 and not close to 50. So, they're, in effect, they're implicitly advocating for a review of the TUP regime and how that works. Well, interestingly, we had this in front of us in November, and one of the reasons we continued it was we said, council was scheduled to hear the TUP regime restructuring on December 11th. That was continued now to February 12th. So, it's close, but one of the things that they're talking about in that context that generated the whole discussion in the first place, the whole impetus to change the regime, is the idea of having smaller events in the park, or things that weren't high-impact events, that would be sort of lower-impact kinds of events. And that discussion has them moving towards, and I'd be curious to know how much more from staff you could elucidate about where the staff report is going on this, but that there would be like a couple levels of TUP, one sort of a low-impact, not much effect, one sort of a bigger kind of event, and that there's some sense of a tier concept evolving there, right? And so, it seems to me that we should be hearing that before we are deciding this, because this could be the kind of thing where we have a relatively small number of the big-impact events that are the loudest concerts, and then maybe there's a lower tier that, as they're talking about, that would allow, you know, the caroling, and/or a folk singer, or, you know, some other things like that, and maybe we can talk about where the movies fit in with that. But it doesn't seem to be making sense to be doing this without understanding what the rules the council really wants. And I think in that regard, it's important to note that the fire department has stated that they need to review each event as an individual event. So, they're in effect treating them as TUPs. The sheriff similarly wants specific notice of each event. So, it feels a little bit artificial to be building it into, we're trying to, you know, put the proverbial 5 pounds into the 4-pound bag here. I would be in favor of making a motion to continue this, to hear what council has to say about, I mean, we're talking, you know, less than a month.
Can I make a motion to continue this until after the council has heard the TUP item?
If you're on board with that, yeah.
Okay.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
Can I jump in and maybe offer a resolution here? So, you know, we hear that Malibu West has no issues with the summer concerts. We would be very open to just allowing the summer concerts and the summer movies on Thursdays and Fridays, and then it'd be great if we could have the Christmas carolers in December as well, and seeking everything else through a TUP.
Well, can I...
Well, okay, let me just say, I think that that might be, there's a more fundamental question about how are these events addressed? Do we, you know, do we write them into a CUP effectively in perpetuity, or do we handle them on a more flexible, changing basis? And we might find that council has a way to say, yeah, you can have, I'm just making these numbers up, but, you know, eight high-impact TUPs per year and 12 low-impact DUPs or something that might get you there without needing to even write this into the parcel itself. John?
I want to ask staff. This whole thing puzzles me, because it appears to me in reading this, you get a CUP for 50 events, you do them, you don't tell the staff anything. And then there's all, then there's this, and I assume that's correct, that you just have 15 movies in the summer, or whatever it is. And then there's all these restrictions on how big they can be, and there's no notice to the public. And the reason for a TUP is to tell the public, hey, next Friday, there's going to be a, you know, a concert. Next Friday, there's going to be a whatever, and there's no notice at all. So, how is it possible for staff to know what's going on, how many people were there, and what happened, and in advance? And it doesn't seem to me there's any consideration of that. There's also, all I can see here is, the only way you can get it stopped if it gets out of control is that, I forgot the name of the word, but a very amorphous word that says, oh, if people object and it's regular or something, then the staff can step in. But that seems like I see a compliance problem. You go to Doug Clevenger. So, my understanding of what the city said, the city council said, was they're going to study TUPs. Basically, and I read that the way, basically how many you can have, 6 is too little for certain areas. So, for example, apparently, one time, they gave the Film Society a whole bunch, okay, by zone, not by particular use. And I went back and read the original proposal for the shopping center. Right in there are findings by the city council saying, yes, it makes noise, yes, it bothers the neighborhood. Okay? Those were in there. So, it's, as somebody said, who's expert is who. But I think, and along with the motion I think we're going to consider, is we need some explanation of why and what's going to happen, why there should be a CUP, why it should cover basically an event and a half a week every year, and where the notice is, and why shouldn't it be? I have no problem with them coming in and saying, we only get 6, that's not enough. Obviously, it's not enough, and the reason we know it's not enough is because they haven't gotten any TUPs for a lot of concerts, okay? They've been in violation in probably 50. And same thing with the Film Society that never turned in a TUP request.
This is heading towards the question, right?
No, the question is, what I'd like to see, and I'd vote along with the Scottler's motion, is, if he makes it, is...
I've made it.
Okay, I'll second it. What process can we have where the staff knows what's going to happen, and the residents are notified? Now, it may not have to be 32 days. Maybe the city council changes that. The way I look at TUP requests is there's no reason why they can't walk in with 15 of them, all dated, all the same, we're going to have a band, it's going to be on this date. We're gonna have a band, it's gonna be on this date, blah, blah, blah.
You'd want to see like a summer concert series at the beginning of the summer with the dates proposed and everything that they're doing?
Well, that just makes it simpler for them. They could come in every week if they wanted to. But what I'd like to see is an increase in the number of TUPs, not an absolute right to have them anytime you want for this purpose or that purpose, without any notice to the public.
But now you're speaking to council.
Well, no, I'm not. I'm saying this is what I'd like to see. I don't, we're not gonna do that.
Well, council's gonna talk about it next month.
Now, we do have on record the homeowners association saying, yes, they have had parking problems, yes, they've had noise problems. They're the neighbors. They're right there.
I think that we have a member that's sitting out in the audience right now that's probably more affected by this than any other neighbor in Malibu West. Maybe the one that lives across from the guard shack from you and that house, but other than where Mark's house is, he's probably one of the most affected.
Right, so.
And even he said he wants to see the concerts happen.
Oh, I have no problem with the concerts happening, it's the process. Does anybody know they're gonna happen? Can they change it?
Can I speak here real quick? I don't, I don't think, Vice Chair, I don't think anybody cares about that. The neighborhood, because I live there, most of my place empties out and everybody walks down. I don't think anybody cares about knowing about when that's gonna be. I'm okay with all this. I don't think you need movies every Thursday night. I think it needs to be cut back some, and that probably should be the TUP part of it. But all this that you're trying to get going, it's been a very successful series of concerts for the three years that I've lived there, and, or going on four, I guess, and there's been new issue. So I don't know that we need to throw a whole bunch of stuff at this. I don't think that's it.
I'm not trying to throw it in. And I want to comment on that, okay? CUPs are different from TUPs because they can't be changed, okay?
No, and I got that. The concerts are, why mess with that? The TUPs, let council talk it out.
The concerts are fine as long as they don't change. If Elvis Costello buys a concert, they.
Along the lines for that. I very much understand the concern to, I too want to see what the council wants to do in regards to the TUPs before we make a decision on this. Do you want to make a decision tonight that says you're allowed to have the summer concert series, or do you want to just wait?
There's no reason to hurry, because it's not until summer.
I understand that there's no reason to hurry, but I'm just saying that we seem like we're all in agreement that this is, that is a community event that we would like to see happen, you know? And I don't think that we're seeing a lot of opposition to that.
Well.
But I think that the proper course of action is gonna be to hear from the city council. We'll get that sorted, we're gonna get back here. So do we need to continue this item to a date certain, or do we want to let staff just hear it?
It's gotta be a date.
Can I say one thing to address Vice Chair Mazza's concerns? Is that a TUP, generally speaking, is, you know, you submit it, you get it, you do your event. Under the conditional use permit process, this, there is a revocation process. If people don't like it, it can be taken away.
Okay, that's enough, because I want to just tell you, thirty-three years as a city, not one, not one has ever been taken away. Thirty-three years, a third of a century.
Not even no.
That's how great the compliance is in this city.
By the same token, by the same token, we have not, to my knowledge, we have not issued a CUP of this extent, and this, you know, this is a big deal. We don't have shopping centers with multiple concerts already.
That's why we're gonna get to a point where we can get a roll call on my motion.
Yeah, and all I want to, just let me sum up, Skylar. All I'm saying is when, after it goes to city council, when it comes back here, I'd like the staff, whatever they say, whatever city council says, to explain how they're gonna keep track of it, okay? Because the way it is written now, nobody knows nothing about anything, okay? So I'm gonna, I second your motion. I think it should be a date uncertain because the council, you don't want to renotice it, the council, I mean, you will have to renotice it, because the council never, they'll have two hearings, they'll have a second reading, they'll have all this kind of stuff.
So, hang on, hang on. What we, it seems like we're heading in a direction here. I'm wondering if there's any kind of guidance or anything that we can give to the applicant that, I mean, I have all kinds of comment I could make. Maybe we just hold that till the next time.
We would obviously support just having the summer concerts approved through this hearing and having everything else heard during, after the TUP process.
I would vote no on that, and I don't think you're gonna get it passed.
Yeah, okay. Enough from the applicant, thank you.
Can, so Skylar, will you amend your motion to a date uncertain, and then we can just vote?
I have no problem amending it to a date uncertain. I just want to be very clear for the record that I would like to see this, you know, as soon as possible, because the people need to make plans for the summer, right? And I think that that's only fair to the applicant. And in terms of the guidance to give the applicant or the staff, I mean, I think the guidance to the staff is, just to bring back the item after the council hears it, but we want to get to a place where we can, I mean, you obviously can see that you have clear support to move forward with the concert series in some fashion, and we're gonna get there, it's just probably gonna take us a few months.
And you have support on council.
Yeah, and obviously, yeah, you have that, you have that as well, and you have the support from the community, with the end of the day is the most important thing.
So we're saying date uncertain just because we can't predict what council will say exactly, and whether that'll take staff two minutes to address or two weeks or whatever?
Yeah, so, and before we vote, I just want to say, yes, what council says counts. Yes, the president of, or the head of the homeowners association next door said he never talked to him. You better talk to him. That's just my advice.
Our office did reach out to, to Malibu West.
He didn't answer his phone, or at least call back after you do this.
Chair, we shouldn't have the. Yeah, yeah.
I move the item.
Okay.
You're not moving the item here.
Rebecca, we have a question for you. What can we do for you?
I would just like you to be aware that April fifteenth would likely be the first meeting that that item could come back before the Planning Commission at, because of the need for a second hearing at city council and then time for rewrites, if necessary, based on the findings made.
When you're saying second hearing, you mean second reading, right?
Yes, and then the due date that the draft is required to be brought to the Assistant Planning Director for, and our peer review processes, we do multiple layers of review.
Could we feel safe enough to go after, before the second reading and just say, once they've made their initial decision, that that's likely clear enough guidance for us?
I mean, I'm okay with that, but that may not be the best policy. If we think that's gonna get changed, I would be a little reluctant to do that.
You can, it's up to staff to make the notice whenever they feel like it, okay? It's just to say, without a date uncertain, you're throwing it in the air, and you know what the council's gonna do, and we don't control them. So I think a date uncertain's fine.
I thought we had the council on a leash, dude, come on.
Yeah, and they can, they can, the staff can pick when they do their notice.
That's cool. I just want to be very clear that if we're gonna go that route, which sounds like we are, we should try to get something on that April meeting and be pretty clear about that, even if we don't have the second reading from the council. And I would like to make that the date.
So we don't know if the city council will make a decision on the ordinance the first time it's presented to them. I think the best way to handle this is to continue to a date uncertain. We'll bring the item back to the Planning Commission as soon as we have direction from city council on what they're gonna proceed with, and that would be before the second here, the second reading on the ordinance.
That's fine, I just don't want to hear no barking from no planning commissioners if we don't get to this and there's a summer concert series and people are having a good time.
They can always get a TUP in the meantime. And TUPs are not hard to get.
Is it possible to have this just continue to the fifteenth and then we can deal with it on that date?
The challenge with us doing that is that we're gonna likely be in a place where there's potentially we don't have that clarified, and we're just gonna be calling all you guys back to say, hey, we're continuing again, or we're gonna make some minor decision. So I think it's probably best to continue to a date uncertain, and the staff has clear direction to get it to us as soon as possible. And you have clear direction for me as one planning commissioner to have a great concert series.
We'll get to this, we'll make it happen. We just need to do it the right way, because the precedents are a little bit unworthy for us.
Yeah, we're behind you. It's just that the TUP thing and council just hasn't talked it over yet, so once they do that, then you, you know, you've got us.
All right, let's call the, date uncertain, right? Let's call the motion. Call the roll.
My apologies, I'm trying to flip back to the correct page and my motion slips. Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard is not.
Commissioner Leonard was recused.
Yes.
Is that your?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
I think there are about seven of us up here.
I am over adjourned.
Thank you. We hope to see you on April fifteenth.
And we hope that, everybody up here hopes that 2024 is a really productive year, because it's, we're out of here, it's 10/15.
Yeah, you're welcome. Oh, my God. Yeah, you know, I'll.